All right, so, sorry, thank you everyone for your patience. We obviously had some technical difficulties, so I'm going to call the Concord School Committee to order. All right, so I wanted to start out with just a quick, um, are my echo?
Turn your volume all the way down. Sorry for everyone in the room to bear with me.
Sorry guys. So before we started this evening, I just wanted to note that last week, a threat was made to Dr. Hunter's personal safety. And Dr. Hunter, we appreciate your extraordinary dedication and tireless public service to our community. I think you've said this before, but being a superintendent can be lonely and I know it can also be thankless. So on behalf of the school committee, I wanted to take a moment to simply say thank you. We also wanted to thank the police officers in our community. We value their critical partnership, especially because the safety of our staff and students is always our top priority. And finally, I guess, I just wanted to say we wish you and all members of our Concord, Carlyle and Boston communities a safe and happy new year. So thank you. So with that, we're going to move to public comment, which I do apologize should be on our Concord School Committee meeting per our policy. It was an unfortunate oversight on my part, which sometimes happens when we shift our Concord meeting to the front of the evening. So regarding public comment, 2022 has brought us significant amounts of public comment and thankfully they're finally not about COVID. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knows we value the contributions of our constituents and we encourage to appreciate public comment, whether it is appreciative or critical. But one thing about COVID is COVID kind of upended all of the ways we do public comment. We were moving to stay at home orders being on Zoom. But given that we have been back in person for almost a year with no interruptions, we have not gone back on Zoom, our meetings have been in the public, but they do still remain hybrid. So given that, we are going to go back to our longstanding policies on public comment and the practices that have been like in use forever. So if you are in the room, you will see an attendance form and this blue form if you wish to make public comment. If you could please fill out this form and drop it with the chair. And because we do remain on hybrid, we will continue for the time being a practice of going between comment in the room and comment on Zoom. So with that, I know we don't have a lot of people here this evening, but I would move to open public comment for the Concord Public Schools.
And you have one form right there.
And I do have one form.
If there are any other forms, if you could bring them up to the table, if you're in the room.
Okay, so I will recognize Katie Chapman of 81 Upland Road for public comment. I like this, this works nice. And I will mute.
I'm fine standing. Okay. So my name is Katie Shagun. I live at 81 Upland Road in Concord and I have two children that attend to Rowell and Montry. I also work at two local school districts as well. I'd like to start by saying, how upset, frustrated and saddened I am over the events that have occurred at the previous school committee meeting. And again, with this meeting, with complaints about banning books here in Concord, Massachusetts in 2022. I am privileged enough to be surrounded in this community by people who are open, welcoming, thoughtful and accepting to everyone who passes through this door or calls this wonderful place home. I have not personally experienced the hate and discrimination and intolerance that I've seen and heard at the previous school committee meetings. The fact that those qualities have presented by members of our community leaves me shocked and outraged. I expect my children to have the opportunities to learn about all walks of life through their education and our family experiences. Research has shown again and again, the more diverse the population is, which includes race, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity and socioeconomic status, the more creative and better solutions the community names to solve their problems. Our schools are here to teach our children how to think and learn, not what to think and learn. That education must start from a place of kindness and respect and at the very least tolerance that people of people that looked at and think differently than yourselves. Our job as parents is to parent our children. You have to work together with your children so that you can make informed decisions about what they read here, watch as they grow. Talk to them, be present and have a better understanding of what they are learning at school and how it relates to your family ideals. Also, as parents, we must be open to learn from our children and change our perspectives on life and the world as it changes and evolves around us. So as that our community can be the best place available for our children to live and thrive. Lastly, I would like to thank our school committee and our outstanding teachers and staff for their continued dedication. They're welcoming, they celebrate and they love each child that walks through their door as it should be. Also, just Dr. Hunter, thank you so much for being part of our community and I am so saddened that you have not gotten the continued support and I hope that our community continues to come together and support these people for giving our children the opportunity to learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment in the room or online, we are going to commence our discussion about a potential middle school building warrant article. We've talked about this a couple of times here. I don't know, I don't remember who was able to hop on to the building committee meeting on Thursday. But on Thursday, Court and I and other members of the building committee began a process where we put together a list of possible deductions from the scope of the project should the estimates and eventual bids come in over the 110 million that will be on the warrant article. I can take you guys through those. They were on the agenda overview as well, which I will pull up. But they essentially were the following items and the approximate amounts. The athletic fields, they represent one and a half million dollars in project scope and cost. The associated landscaping that totaled 300,000. The wood look beyond the ceilings in certain areas of the buildings, they were about 190,000. The bleachers, which totaled about 84,000. And then we did discuss the outdoor classrooms. We don't have an associated cost with that yet. So that really isn't something I think we can entertain for this discussion. But I'm looking to all of you guys to hear your thoughts on whether we should consider putting a warrant article on the table. If any of these, you know, my thought, I'll just kick off the discussion, my thought is if any of these things are considered like deferments and not cuts, I'll personally say like the wood look ceiling, I think could be a reduction in scope. The athletic fields, that's probably a deferred cost. I don't think we're going to open a school without athletic fields. But anyway, I opened that to you guys. That was sort of what we wanted to talk about today and we have the ability to put a warrant article out there. Should we think it's wise? Pass discussion on to you all. Is that a raised hand? It's very mild, Court.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, oh, it wasn't. Okay, it looked like, it looked very passive. Sure.
Do I need to unmute?
Oh, goodness, yeah, this is going to be, okay, great.
Can you just walk through the process, the warrant process? So like we approve, we vote on this this evening, let's say it passes. We get the bids, from my understanding, we can, then the bid comes under, the things that are on this list go away, we can remove the warrant. We can pull the warrant or?
You're missing one step.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure I understand the process.
Yeah, so the first step would be we would submit this warrant.
Right.
The select board would have to say, this is a good idea or this is not a great idea. So ultimately, we can put forth the warrant, but ultimately the decision whether to advance it to town meeting would then become in the hands of the select board. The reason we have to do this today is because the warrants are due January 4th. So and then, then your timeline begins to make sense. Then after that, if these estimates come in or in the eventual bids come in below, which again, if we're into discussion, I'm confident, I see no reason at this point really why the next estimate would come in above what the 60% estimate came in at, only because economically things tend to be in our favor. So then if that was the case, we wouldn't even bring this to the floor of town meeting. It would just sort of go away. But because things have been so unstable, my feeling is if we can do this and do this responsibly and get things done for a cost we know as opposed to some, you know, I don't know, we don't, we just don't predict the future. So as much as we can control things, I'd like to try and control that. That makes sense. Oh, yeah.
I've got a few things to share and also ask about, about this proposal. But first, on a technical angle, and I think it is a follow on to your, your question. We have a January 4th warrant deadline. What if we were to be in need of additional support for this project? Presuming that we get the new 7 million, it becomes 110, which becomes what it really becomes with borrowing. If we needed more after that, do we not have the option of a special town meeting within the town meeting that makes the January 4th deadline not a hard and fixed deadline for us? Because that's not an uncommon practice to have a special town meeting inside a town meeting. So does that take this looming January 4th off, off of us to give us time to see the 90% estimates come in?
And even the bids.
And even the bids. So I want to, I want to, I want to put that question forward and I want to share my opinion, which is I don't want to take a stand on this proposal because I think it's premature. And in no particular order, just a few things about it. I sat through the select board's meeting last night. And one of their comments was, the school committee has had two capital planning meetings with us and on neither occasion did the school committee even discuss this with us. This is quite a surprise was, was the inference.
But that's because it doesn't meet a tier three threshold.
Well, they claimed it did and they read the, they read the language. So anyway, I just want you to know their opinion.
It was over 4 million, like five million.
That's why we didn't.
With their position, and again, you know, we can debate this with them. I'm just, I'm just reporting this part. I'll give you my own opinions later. But what they, I forget which member it was, but they read the, the tier language that refers to 5 million being an aggregate number, meaning if you break apart a project, but the sum total is 5 million or in excess, that then it's tier three. That's their interpretation. So just, we should be aware their interpretation is different than yours on that one. So we'll have to.
What would the aggregate be though, that would get us over 5 million?
1.8 plus 110 million, I think was what they would.
The middle school building project, I mean, that's, everybody knows that that is the tier, that is the main project. So this is, so it's still, we're in the 1.8.
But isn't also choosing the middle school project to town project and not a school project?
Capital project.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that this is a debate we should be having. I'm simply reporting to you that their, their opinion was, this was a surprise that they hadn't seen it coming and there were two members who spoke to it and were not favorable. One seemed to be middle of the road and two didn't speak to it. So I think it's contingent upon us if we were to consider this to consult with the select board. I think that we want to hold off because we are not in need of it yet. We do have the opportunity to work between now and January 4th or even beyond. If we put a special town meeting warrant article in front of the select board and move that forward. I'm, I'm concerned about the continued added costs. What we heard at the building committee meeting on the part of our select board chair was, let's be cautious about how we put forth brand new articles if we don't need them because we don't want to signal bidders that this town will simply throw warrant article after warrant article after warrant article, that they don't have to sharpen their pencil when they're working with Concord. I think you remember that. Those weren't his exact words, but that was clearly his meaning. And I think this would do just what he warned us against. I think we have to remember that we've had the support of the select board and the FinCom up to this point. I don't want to do anything to jeopardize it. I think 100 million dollars, 110 million dollars is a very, very big ask. What did we, we see in a communication from a funding agency that supports Concordians in need? One out of 12 families in this town today are food insecure. We're asking them to take on an additional burden for 30 years of well in excess of an extra thousand, 1400, I don't know what the number is. But we do know that if we can get the $7 million added to the 102, we've got 110 and the real costs will be far in excess of 200 million dollars. So 110 million dollar school is a 200 million dollar plus cost to the town. Those are real numbers. Those are borrowing costs and I think we have to reckon with that and realize that we want a fantastic school for those teachers and the kids who pass through those three grades and will get it. But I don't want to jeopardize something that is going to be a magnificent 110 million dollar school with this very quick move to bring more warrant articles to the table. Now, if we do find that we are in need of additional money and we don't want to saddle Concord taxpayers with yet another warrant article for this single project that would further jeopardize public works needs, which are very real, public safety needs, which are very real. We've heard those discussions with the select board. The Community Preservation Act is not something that gets added to people's tax bill. And they've already funded numerous times fields. They've even funded private, privately owned projects. This year, they didn't even have enough requests to meet their, their, their available budget. And we could make that timing work for us if we wanted to, but we're not there yet. We don't need the 108 million dollars yet or everything that it signals to us and to the community about our efforts to, to cost manage. I spoke to the 110, the plus 200 million dollar in real costs, that doesn't even include yet the solar. We know now what we didn't know a month ago, that's another 10 million dollars. And just because it comes at us in a different bill doesn't mean it's not a Concord rate payer that's paying it. It's, it's on us. And some of us in this town are going to have a very difficult time. Perhaps I'm not, but I think our job as a school committee is to protect the long-term interests of the school and that means protecting the interests of the people who support it and show that our wants and needs are balanced with their capacity.
All right.
And, and yeah, I'll, I think I can finish up right now. I think those are the, the essentials. I think that if we need this, we can come at it at a time that's much more appropriate and wouldn't perhaps send the wrong signals to the, the town, the entire town that we want to keep behind this project. Thank you.
What do we say to the community next year when the fields cost 3 million? That's what I get nervous about. Is it, which is the more responsible path? I fully recognize what you're saying, but I just get worried that then we're going to be back here. We could be back here in a year, in 18 months, asking for more money. So that is the only thing I'm seeking to prevent. And again, I'm kind of bullish on this. I don't think we're going to need it, but you know, my feeling is, do you, do you, do you work with the devil you know, so to speak, the cost that we'll get today? Rather than roll the dice and say things could get worse. I don't know, you know, like I'm, I'm risk averse in this scenario. For all the reasons you state, I think, I get nervous. Is the town going to have an appetite in 18 months for fields that cost 3 million or, and, and, and don't get me wrong, I agree, we're, we're working to get a meeting scheduled with the Community Preservation Committee. I think there'll be, there'll be monies there too. Again, this is, make no mistake, this is the backup plan. It's not the plan. And that's what I wrestle with.
Do you want to mute so I can unmute? Okay. So I, I definitely feel as though it is the backup plan and this is, we can always withdraw it. I think we're confusing the matter to have a special town, we're going to have a special town meeting in February. We're to have a town meeting in April, a special town meeting within a special town meeting. The logistics of this is very confusing for people. The town has already voted, it's 103 million dollars that town has said yes to. They've already said yes to the increase of their tax bill. I mean, I think that we have to recognize that the voters have said yes to that. We're going back looking for additional money to finish the school. I've lived in this town through every single school built and I think that the high school, what did we do? It took us eight years to actually, we actually still haven't finished the high school. The roadway is being paved this summer. So we are deferring those costs and make no bones about it. I mean, it's fields, it's bleachers, it's, you know, and maybe we don't put the bleachers in there, I don't know, but my feeling about the bleachers is I think every school should have bleachers. But I do think that this is the wise thing to do is to have a backup plan. I, I was not at the rest of the select board meeting last night, so I'm not exactly sure what was said last night. But we are the school committee and we're trying to get this school built and have it be done the way that it should be done and have it be finished. So I think that having a backup plan is something that we should, we should do.
There we go. So would this borrowing be within the levy or outside the levy? So we're basically tagging on almost 2 million dollars to the taxpayer.
But we don't know that we would have to discuss that amount and vote on it.
No, 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 but so it's within the levy, whatever amount. Right? So that's, we don't have a separate budget. That's part of the town budget. We're a department of the town. So we're adding the schools or the building or whatever you're referring to it as. And then the breakdown would be there's 1.5 or so for the fields and the 300,000.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so I don't think CPA is going to be available for you know, landscaping. It's not, it's, I don't think so, but they would be able to tell you. I'm of the same accord. I think we should hold off and ask the select board to call a special town meeting within the town meeting, which requires 45 days, which has put us well into March where we would have a lot more information. And I think that's the responsible thing to do. I, nobody at this table would want to open a school or the, have the community without fields. There's no question about that. But I think we can hope for the best and then if we don't, if, if it's an alt delete, we'll have to deal with that.
Pragmatic, but like, what's the difference? Like, so if we advance this article today, it's just there. We don't have to call a special town meeting. I don't know if there's associated costs of that. If the bids come in below one, or the estimates come in at below 110 million, we wouldn't advance the article. So like from a very like literal standpoint, what's the difference?
I don't like the message it sends that we're to go ahead and assume. It sounds like, yes, exactly.
But we also have the message that we send to the community that voted for this building too, that they want us to advocate. We've heard that loud and clear that the community wants us to advocate to get this building built and to get it built right. So I think that, you know, when we're talking about optics, is it the optics of the select board and the FinCom? Is it the community? Is it, like, I think we have to just think about, you know, what, what is our goal? Our goal is to get everything built and it's to get everything done. I mean, I mean, well, that's my goal.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all have the same goal. We just might come at it different ways. Yeah, that's fine.
You know, could we advance the article and still where to build it, especially town meeting within a town meeting? So that we can make sure, I mean, is there any card advancing this article tonight? We can always withdraw it if we decide that that's, you know, give it a month. When is the last place we would have to draw your, the day of town meeting? We just wouldn't advance it this way, right? We don't withdraw. We just don't get up on the board.
My, my feeling is like similar to what you just said. I, I think that we ought to look at every possible option. We should be talking to CPA. I mean, why not explore the idea of a, I've not heard of a town meeting within a town meeting. Why not look into it, but at the same time not lose the opportunity now to have this as a backup? My, I, I've said before, I firmly believe that we have a chance now to build this building right. I think that we have an obligation to the students, to the teachers, to the community to do that and our moment to do that is now. So I, I hope that when these bids come in, that it's unnecessary and we can withdraw it and, and move on. But I, I think it, I don't think it would be responsible to not have something on the table to do the things that are necessary now. I agree, the wood, the wood panel ceilings would be a beautiful way to enter a building. And I think entering a building, I think our architects that are on one of the calls, it's an emotional experience. I want our kids to have that, but if that isn't out of the cards, like that's not a deal breaker. But to me, fields, we have to have fields and I personally believe we have to have bleachers. You can't have a gym without bleachers. But that's, that's the question.
Well.
If I may.
What?
If the school committee were not to move this forward tonight, and I'll note, the building committee hasn't even come in with a position on it. And they're the ones who are actually responsible for this project and they're as committed as we are to seeing this school. If we're, it were not to be moved tonight, it doesn't go off the table. It still remains as a option for us. In fact, it remains an option for us. It could be a heck of a lot more realistic and accurate with none of the potential downsides because we're going to have a better number in the, in the very near future. So if we simply throw a 1.8 million dollar solution at a problem that hasn't been defined yet, I think it makes future efforts to come at a problem, if it does exist, more difficult for us. I don't think we gain any credibility by just throwing this solution at a problem that doesn't have a.
Come down on it. We can always.
But we always don't need to do it now, is my point.
Well, we only do because of the January 4th deadline and.
But that, it's 45 days prior to the April meeting. That's your deadline. Am I correct, Ms. Rainey? Okay, and, and if you look back over the town clerk's annual records of town meetings, you'll see it littered with special town meetings. They happen all the time. They're, they're frequent.
Yep.
More years than not, actually.
Yeah.
So, so it's not a bizarre move on the part of the town to do that. No, in fact, some, some towns have two town meetings every year. So that they don't have special town meetings. But at any rate, I would prefer not to have to take a position on this tonight because I think it's unnecessary. I think the, if we don't move on it, I don't think we're signaling to anybody that this school committee doesn't want a new middle school. I don't think there's any danger of that whatsoever. Really don't, don't think we're going to jeopardize the project.
All right. Well, thank you guys.
Right. So the, the prior projects we have, I'll just run down what they are. We don't, I think, have any indication that we're going to be over budget on any. We anticipate potentially being a little bit under budget on a couple. So we have the alternative energy research project on Alcott, the feasibility study. We have some carpet tile replacement going on in the elementary schools. The Thro ERU replacement at 660,000, that's a large item from prior years. Don't have any reason to think it's going to vary much from that. To replace all the ERUs there. Ground, which is now up and there at Thro. I don't know if pictures have been shared yet or not, but. So we saw it last week, that 55,000 comes from capital, a portion of that's funded by the PTG. The Willard Fields have $160,000 allocated towards that for irrigation and well drilling. We have the 50,000 each at Pevy and Sandborne. I know we've spent that, some of that for health and safety items for both of those older schools. And at Ripley, we have, this is going to be deferred to next year. The HVAC upgrades is 294,000 and another 46,000. Going toward the, the project here to installing the heat pumps in the pods. 110,000 for paving the parking lot and sidewalk replacements. And 140,000 for flooring at Ripley, which is significantly, it's partially complete. Lots more work being done over the break. So that's 210 for the parking and 140 for the flooring at Ripley. So essentially, all the fear funds are committed. The, the ones that will carry forward to next year are the ones that relate to the Ripley HVAC and that will be needed to go towards that project in FY '24.
One thing.
Yeah.
So this is another, you know, kind of interesting thing that this 900K is not like our budget is part of the town's budget. It's part of the town manager's budget. So I kind of always thought it was part of our budget, but it's part of Karen's budget, which we always,
Always has been.
Right.
We move it and they pick it up.
Yeah.
So we're actually all here, even though we're high, so I think we can just vote. So all in favor. All in favor. Did somebody read the motion?
Entertained a motion.
And I, I'm okay.
So I said a vote to approve the CPS capital plan. Tracy.
Motion in the,
Oh, is there a motion in the, sorry.
I moved with the Concord Public Committee vote to approve the FY '24 capital budget in the amount of $900,000 and to further approve the accompanying draft warrant article language for town meeting approval.
And I'll second that now. And just for the minutes, can I just say, Erin, all Concord Public members are present. And I, you should also present, sorry.
All right. So all in favor. Aye. All right. So we have 15 minutes before our hearing. I am going to move to put the warrant article on the second half of our CPS meeting when we vote on the budget as well, if everyone is so inclined, so that we can at least have a 15 minute break before the hearing. Does that work?
Sounds good. Yes.
There's dinner, just because we're going to be here a while.
You're adjourning us.
So I will adjourn, I move to adjourn the Concord Public School Committee.
I don't think you are adjourned.
Oh yeah, we're staying in session, but having a, with a break.
Okay.
Yep, a recess.
To reconvene at 6 o'clock.
To reconvene in 15 minutes at 6 PM. Thank you, guys.
And you can take us, you can mute the whole room now. Thank you.
Good. Welcome back or welcome us back, everybody. At this point, I would open, like to open the hearing, the public hearing on the Concord Public School budget. And with that, I will turn over to Bob Conry.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am, just so people are aware, we did present an initial budget for CPS Concord Public Schools on December 6th. There are no changes to what was presented on the 20th. However, I know this is a public hearing. We're going to go through all the slides again, in the event we have new listeners. So I'll dive right in. I'm going to project this on the screen. So just to summarize our, our budget process, this is going to look familiar. We have a zero-based budget process. We build the budget from the ground up. We reevaluate each line every year. We don't necessarily just take something and carry it over to the next year. We do reevaluate its need and its importance. The budget's built by principals and administrators. Also with the support of the department heads, particularly in the middle school and the high school, who do a lot of work on the supplies, materials that are needed to support the curriculum. Today, we are at a step in the process, the open hearing, where we present the school committee to, present the budget to the school committee. And we will be sharing this with, with town officials now and as we move forward. At the same time, we have the town budget process moving forward in the town of Concord. We, the guidelines are issued by the FinCom. And we work with them, kind of understand what their constraints, they communicate. And we communicate what we see as the school's needs. So this is a parallel process. And then, you know, we're at a point in time, there may be changes, a new information that comes to light and will, that will happen as more information comes forward. This slide shows our enrollment trends over FY '18 to FY '22. You can see it's fairly flat, slight, slight decrease. One thing I will comment on is though, though there's a slight decrease, the, the needs that we're seeing for students, some significant needs are a little bit more proportionate across our student body than, than they were in prior years. So that's kind of a challenge amidst the slight enrollment change. We, we have per pupil expenditure data that's shared by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. And we're sharing this, feel like it's contextual information that's, that's useful to look at. So you can see Concord, Carlisle and Concord, we're slightly above the midpoint of our peer districts. And these are the districts we benchmark with for various purposes. I've also listed the state totals there as well. Though I think this is a little different than you might have seen five to seven years ago, where we would have been a little bit further to the left in both districts.
Yeah, I'm happy to just reference, you've heard a lot of these strategic objectives and initiatives. They are what drive our budget. Those are always where the priorities come from and making sure that we're focused on the efforts to make progress. And I'll just highlight the four major categories of student success, mental wellness, DEIB and learning environments. And I think throughout the budget, there's a lot of effort to support those. And we're grateful that we're able to sustain that and, and move the projects forward.
So this is the top level view of our budget. It's by the DESI 1000 function. This is the view that we look at and we look at our quarterly actuals and the categories. I do have a reference slide in the back that kind of lists what's included in each category as well. So, and I'll be going through in detail more of what's driving each of these buckets. But you can see the, you know, the other school services is a fairly significant percentage increase. Teaching and instructional support on a dollar basis is, is kind of the main driver of the 2.1 million. It's 1.6 million. Overall, we're at a 5.08% increase versus last year's budget. And there are a few things contributing to that. And I'm going to go through those in the next slides. Our key drivers, and I've done this for, our, our key driver for the teaching and instructional support, the 2000 level. It's a 1.6 million, a little bit over 1.6 million increase or 4.8% over the FY '23 budget. 319,000 as support staff, including 5.6 FTE increase for special ed tutors and assistants. This is really driven by meeting student needs. Part of the dollar increase, this also includes contractual increases in anybody that's advanced a step as well. Supplies and materials to support curriculum are part of the teaching instructional support budget. That increase is 5.8%, a $78,000 increase. We've seen some price pressure from vendors and we're worked to resist the increases they proposed. However, this pressure still exists and we have a 5.8% increase versus prior year. Our contract services decreases 82,000. And this is really an offset to, we hired a physical therapist. So there's an additional staff position that used to be outsourced. So it used to be a contract services cost. So those, those two offset each other, but the contract services category is down 82,000. And our CTA salaries are up 1.3 million, 1.345 million, a 5.5% increase. And I'll go over in the next page what that is comprised of. 2.75% are half of the 5.5% increases of cost of living increase, contractual increase in the CTA contract. In addition to that, there's steps and lanes for teachers that have advanced either their education or a year of experience. We've added positions for, and these are really driven by each of these. Well, the physical therapist I previously referenced isn't necessarily really an additional expense. It's just that there's an offset to the physical therapists and contract services. The added positions are a BCBA. And that person is on staff now and is to meet significant needs we have across our special education programs. And we have students that are currently at Pevy that'll be moving up. They're in an intensive learning program at Pevy. We'll need that program at Sandborne when sixth grade students move to seventh grade. You know, this might be an example of one thing that in a single building might be an expense we potentially could avoid. The longevity scale, a change was, was made effective in FY '24 to bring the CTA contract into parity with the CCTA contract in terms of longevity. Not all of the 72 is just to bring it into parity. Some of that is including teachers who got onto longevity scale for the first time. It also includes the, some teachers coming off of longevity scale. So it's kind of a mix of everything, but the main driver of that is the, is the contractual change. Retirements are factored into our budget. However, we did factor some of these into last year's budget, but they didn't occur. So even though we factored it into this year's budget, we're not getting all of the savings this year because we, it's already in the baseline that we had for FY '23. And we increased the professional contingency budget slightly to 40,000 from 12,000. So that's another factor. So all of those contribute to the teaching instructional support increase of 1.6 million. Other school services, a little bit more straightforward. There's a few key main drivers. It's a 9.4% increase, 277,000. We do have a nurse that was previously contracted service. It's an additional FTE for one-to-one support nurse. We have bus driver salaries. The 57,000 represents 7% overall relative to the total cost of transportation. There is an additional route that's in there as well. So, but most of that is contractual increases. Special ed case transportation is up 8%, 45,400. The next two relate to transportation as well. So you know, the supply chain pressures and fuel and energy costs are driving both of those, 52,000 for fuel. And hopefully, we see some stabilization there. We didn't get too aggressive or too conservative. I think we tried to strike a balance in what we budgeted there. There's some opportunity that it could be better. There's some potential it could be higher. But it's the best estimate we could make. In transportation supplies and maintenance, we do have some buses that are aging. Parts are getting harder to get and they're getting more expensive. So that's a combination of the aging, but also just the supply chain challenges. For maintenance and operations, it's a relatively minor increase of 3.5%, especially considering that utilities is up 109,000, due mainly to the guidance we received from CMLP regarding rate increases. The rest of our, our line items were very limited increases despite inflationary pressures. Fixed charges is, is a decrease. There's two, two factors driving this. $58,000 increase for property and school board liability policies, which incurred in part due to some lost claims history. We also have an offsetting, so while that's increasing, we have an offsetting reduction in early retirement and sick time buyout of 142,000. Those payouts will be declining and sunsetting as those programs wind down. We do not have any current, or exist, we're not proposing any programs this year in the future. So this will eventually wind down to zero. And then out of district tuitions, we've talked about this quite a bit in previous school committee meetings and other forums. The most significant contributor to our increases are the 14% rate increase for private, private special education institutions. The State Operational Services Division presented us with guidance that that was going to occur. You might recall, you know, I said that we've communicated with the state, we're hopeful for some relief. We haven't received any communication yet. A lot of districts expressed similar sentiments that we did, that this is a lot for us to absorb in one year. I don't know, we're still hoping we, we see and get some, either some type of additional revenue support or expense offset. But we have to budget what we know, and this is what we know right now. So we've factored the 14% increase in. And, you know, that contributes to the bulk of this. It's 251, And you know, that contributes to the bulk of this. It's two hundred fifty one thousand dollar increase overall. And again, most of that's from the private school increase. We do have on the side, we have a slight increase in the offsets for circuit breaker and I D A. You can see the amounts on the slide, but it's fifteen thousand in total. Another thing we talked about last week, I know the school committees heard this, but. Do you have significant variability on this line? Out of district tuitions for any school district is one of the most variable lines student needs can change significantly and out of district tuitions can be. Can be expensive. You can have students move in and out of district. So just as a point of reference last year. Last year's budget, we we had a six hundred and three thousand dollar reduction in the F Y twenty three budget from F Y twenty two. So this year, there's a slight increase. This this can happen. It does make budgets. Little bit. It would be nice. I'm sure the the finance committee and select board would like it to be level, but we do have the bumpiness. School budgets have that town budgets might not. The next slide is just an example. So when you think in here about out of district costs going up. It's important to remember that we've brought a lot of programs in house. And. We've basically got those programs fully operational, full of students. And we realized most of the savings in prior budgets, the benefits in our budget through. For example, last year, the six hundred thousand dollar reduction, we've received those benefits. It's not necessarily reflected as a decrease in our budget going forward. It's more of a cost avoidance. And this is an example of two programs in district. How they're staffed, what the total in-house cost is compared to what it is outside of. Out of district. And. You can see this, the the cost avoidance of approximately one point seven million. So again. By having these programs, we're keeping students in district. Which is also best for them. And and if it is best for them to keep them in district, we're saving money at the same time, so. Just wanted to highlight that. So even though we're not seeing year over year budget reductions, we're still avoiding some significant costs. So we looked at the Desi Department of Elementary Secondary Dead kind of account structure. This is just a different view of our year over year increase. Just at the top level of what's salary increases versus non-salary increases. It's a four point six percent increase from a salary perspective. Including salaries across all different positions in the district. And this non-salary is a seven point six percent increase in total five point one, five point oh eight percent to be more specific. And the non-salary key drivers are the tuitions that we just talked about. Energy utility, utility related items. You know, we've we've seen that in our own personal bills, a hundred sixty one thousand. The property liability insurance, special ed transportation, and there's an offsetting reduction in. Special ed contract services, which it does impact the salary account, but here it's a savings in the non-salary. On the salary side, our our key drivers are teacher salaries. It's a five point seven increase or one point four million. Six hundred eighty eight thousand of that is the two point seven five percent contractual cost of living increase. Three hundred eighty six thousand is for additional F T Es, the positions we we spoke about earlier, the. B C B A, the the B T, the one to one nurse and the special ed teacher. The the one in red is the only one that's not currently here now. That's that would be in addition next year. The other ones. We've we've discussed, we've needed to add to meet student needs, or we've offset contracted services. The longevity payments is, we talked about earlier as well, is to bring the C T A scale in line with the C C T A scale. And then the remainders. Various things, steps and lanes, retirement assumptions and replacement cost differentials. The non-teacher salaries is a three point eight percent increase. And that includes contractual increases and additional tutor and assistant positions. And those are offset by the second retirement program. Fifty six percent decrease from previous year. So as we move forward, those amounts again will continue to decrease. So a high level view at the at the school level. You know, most of the. You know, drivers, you know, I've kind of looked at this at the the Desi level, but just this is just to share. How things look at the school view. As a as a reference. Esther funding. So our Esther funds are starting. We're in close to winding down. We do have this year and next year. Where we have some significant Esther funds that will be utilizing primarily S or three. You can see four hundred and fifty thousand, but close to four fifty one, both this year and next year that we anticipate using for S or three. S or two and the related American Rescue Plan Act I D A funds will be spent down this year. There's also as a reference prior expenses for F Y twenty to twenty two. And the next slide shows how we're spending the Esther three funds. We have a counseling position at P B D for two years, special ed teacher for our language based program for two years. We have summer school programs that we have budgeted. For two, you know, if we can, you know, it'd be nice to to get. To be able to use some of that in F Y twenty five. We have the summer there where we we can spend. If we're able to carry some over, the required M T R S contribution, we don't have any. Say that's a required piece when you have professional M T R S positions like the counseling and the special ed teacher, you need to contribute that. And the instructional materials. Is one time purchase items for culturally proficient materials. The deadline for this grant is September of two thousand twenty four, which is early in two thousand twenty five. So these school year positions can't be funded by it with this deadline. Again, possibly. If we can, we'll try to carry some of the three hundred and seventy two thousand into the summer of F Y twenty five. But we're not sure if that'll, we'll be able to do so at this point. And that's it. If there's any questions, I could entertain them.
Anyone want to start? Well, thank you, Bob. That is really fun. Yeah. I really like the way you presented it. It's so clear and. Nothing but good things to say. Anyone have questions on our budget?
I've got a couple.
Got to.
I've got a couple of questions. I'm curious, as a public hearing, do we open this up?
We will. We're going to do our discussion and then we will open it up because I figure the public might be informed even by what we have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Can you speak? Maybe Lori, this goes to you. Professional contingency. Can you help me understand what what that means? That was the. The the increase from twelve to forty eight K, a small number.
Yeah, a few years ago, we established a line item that we openly labeled as contingency for any needs that might come up, whether it be. Primarily staffing was always our mindset, whether we had enrollments that required an additional section or things like that. You'll see, we had it at a hundred and fifty thousand at one point. Last year to get to guideline, we took almost all of it. And that proved to have some ramifications of the budget work we had to do to get through to open school for this. Current school year. So we would like to see some of that reinstated. Because of where we are with guidelines and other needs right now, we haven't bumped it all the way back to the one fifty. We're coming into a more moderate request, but. A twelve thousand dollars contingency line isn't helpful for staffing needs and things like that. Forty would at least be a tutor. So that was sort of the mindset.
And we could have other contingency monies that weren't labeled professional if we had indeed.
Well, so that's somewhat we had to do this this year was to look where we had other other options. It's nice to know you've got a spot, especially in the summer as you evolve through the summer and the unknowns play out.
Okay, thank you. Let me turn to insurance. I I don't know if we should be disappointed that we became uncoupled with the the town. I don't know if there was any. Discounting because of the volume when we were aggregated with them for insurance, but. If if part of it was claims related. Does that suggest to us when you should be doing anything about risk avoidance mitigation that we weren't doing prior? We we did have.
Did have my risk manager come onsite and visit our buildings. We can partner with them and and get guidance. I do think that they provide useful resources. For example, to give you some winter tips, you know, you can follow and look at facilities, you know, freeze up prevention. So I do think working with them is helpful. They're. I think one of the better resources that we have from an insurance perspective. What I don't know at this point, again, I've been able to dig into a lot of things, but what I don't know is whether. The rates that we were getting as part of the town were just an estimate. And then when we actually uncouple them, look at our separate assets, whether the reality of what our real price was showed up. So I I don't necessarily think it's that we. Had a detriment of of separating. I think that there there may have been some. Inaccuracy in our allocation from the town coupled with the claims loss history. So that's that's.
Myself. So I'm assuming M I A looks back. Do they see patterns and then they look at current.
Right.
Facilities and operations and look for potentials.
Yes.
Okay, yep, good.
And some losses will will fall off the radar for their loss history at some point.
A request for after the holidays on your school summary view. Where you list out the schools. We've got the fiscal twenty three requested budget. I think that actually was the approved budget. Followed by fiscal twenty three. Requested F T E, which I assume is.
Approved.
It was approved as of July one with some changes of necessity. Can we at some point in the near future get your fiscal twenty four F T E? On that same table.
It's on the right side.
Oh, there it is. Forgive me. Okay, looking for it next week. Very good.
Done before the new year.
Scaring at me. Okay, thank you. Reading my mind. Okay. And then finally, S or three use of funds slide. The additional retirement monies, are those relative to the positions on this slide? Thank you. That's what I assume. Okay. They're specific to those.
Yeah, any grant money that you use, you have to carry the retirement for the positions that are in the grant. So we usually try to avoid it. In this case, it made sense to still do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have, at the region, we did. I think we have. We do have a policy. I I believe so, yes.
Yeah, they split the region.
Good point. Okay. Okay. So the reason.
Okay, sorry for that.
Well, thank you. Appreciate going through it again.
Yeah.
Good for us.
Yeah.
Do you want to open it up to the public?
Yes, so Alexa stepped up. So anyone from the public, we will open up for questions or comments on anything heard. Regarding what Bob just presented, and I will look online and see if there's anybody there. So if you're online, use the raise hand. And we have Matt Johnson.
Hello. So first question I have is, is this budget present? My name is Matthew Johnson, twenty one Winter Street in Concord. I'm a member of the select board with speaking on behalf. So our first question is, is this presentation that we just saw available anywhere? I can't seem to find it. Like from the agenda.
Yeah, we'll link it tonight, Matt. No problem.
Okay, the second question is, how does this budget that's as shown. Relate to the finance committee's guideline for CPS?
So, Matt, just give me a second. I have that in a memo I wrote to the school committee. The guideline. As I recall, was three point three percent. The difference where we are right now between what we presented in guideline is seven hundred and seventy six thousand and change. That's where we are.
So the your bottom line increase is how much? Just remind me.
Five point oh eight percent.
You mean as you presented tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and so, yeah, significantly above the guideline.
Yeah.
And then the third thing is just the increase in F T Es. It was quite eye opening number of F T Es with the declining enrollment. So I just wondered in the benchmarking data that you have, do you do you benchmark in F T Es per student or anything like that? It just seems like. There's a very large number of F T Es with a declining enrollment.
Yeah, that's a great question. Most of them are attributable to the new special education programs. We've actually cut sections at the elementary schools the last few years because of the declining enrollment. When we bring in these intensive programs, they have special educators plus a. Pretty, pretty broad range of support personnel. So almost all of it is those programs or the supports to those programs. But we could break that out if if that was of interest to folks. And we do benchmark against other districts certainly.
Yeah, I'm just curious where we fall. You know.
We've been above other districts and hire more students per adults. We'll certainly keep an eye to look at the most recent data that's available.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Matt, the the agenda that's online has a link to the presentation.
I saw the link to the capital presentation and I clicked on that and I also clicked on the one for the report. You know, that shows the objectives for the school, but there's not one for the operational.
It's in the title that says public hearing. It's on, it's right attached to that.
Okay.
That's a hot link, which normally it isn't on our agenda.
Oh, so hold it. Public hearings. No, I really am still stuck. I can't. Okay, I see action items, three approved capital plan. There's a hyperlink there. I see one down. Chair Lee is on the superintendent report, but I don't see one. I just downloaded from the town website.
Oh, I see. It's on the school website linked to the agenda we posted there. So that's.
I see. Okay, well, I don't have that one. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
If anybody wants to go online, go on copper P S dot org and I've been school meeting late under meetings and agendas of the December twentieth meeting. It will be that taken care of. Thanks. Any other comments from the hearing? I'll wait for the CPS chair to come back to close the hearing then. All right, I'm going to close the CPS hearing. All right. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Bob. That was great. All right. And I think that with that, we're just waiting for our car law members who are here. Think they're outside. Thank you.
They'll just look like one anymore.
Yeah.
Oh, great. All right, so we'll conclude the hearing. Thank you guys. Tracy here, she did it. And I guess with that.
I'm just waiting for the regional members. Somewhere else. We're just waiting. Thank you, the audience for bearing with us.
It'll be seven. Better. Lot of moving parts tonight.
They were right there, right?
Yeah, they put, they went into conference room three.
Quicker than we thought. No, I did not. I went to, I. At this point, it is six thirty seven. I would like to call the region to order and for the minutes, Erin, all members of the region are present. And you should think those are also present. So thank you. So before we open up the hearing, I just want to acknowledge that last week there was a threat to Dr. Hunter's personal safety. Dr. Hunter, we appreciate your support, your dedication, and tireless public service for our community. Being a school superintendent is definitely challenging and stressful, but also rewarding. So we thank you for all the time that you dedicate to our students, our staff. And our families. So thank you. And with that, I am now going to open up the hub, public hearing for the regional. So Bob, welcome again.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, um, share the slides. Okay. So we just went through the, um. The budget process for CPS. It's essentially the same in many regards here. Again, just for the benefit of our car law members attending, we, we, our, our budget process is zero based. We build it from the ground up. We do reevaluate each line item, uh, every year. We don't necessarily carry over items like, um. In many places where budgets are just increased a certain percent. Uh, but a thorough evaluation is done by our principals, administrators. And our department heads at, uh, the middle school and the high school, um, who look at the, uh, the curriculum materials and software. The guidelines process is something that happens as well with the town of Concord. They provide guidelines for a regional budget and our town CPS budget. Um, and we're in communication with Carlisle. We'll be meeting with them in January. Talk about their budget. We've actually had a preliminary offline conversation. Just to introductory with the, uh, town administrator. Um, and so, um, where we are now is the open hearing. We do know that we'll receive some more information as we move forward. And, um, some feedback and we'll, we'll work through that and update, uh, as needed going forward. The enrollment slides, um, that really the CCHS is the red one, um, which is relatively flat. You can see over the past five years. Per people expenditures. Um, this is with our peer districts. I'm actually not sure if we benchmark with Carlisle, but I listed that since it's one of our. Regional members. Um, so you can see our, um. Per people expenditures relative to the, the group. And we are, um, slightly above the, uh, the, the, the median of our group.
Yeah, I'll just reference these quickly because you're very familiar with them. It's the four categories from the strategic planning process. Which, as you know, we've just renewed and are in the process of updating. But these have held and they do drive what we bring to you for requests in the budget. In this case, mostly level service. While we look at how to expand the usage of what we've had for funds. So it's a pretty extensive list and I'll just. Name the four categories again, which fit to the high school as well as, um, the K eight budget that we just talked on. So student success. Mental wellness, D E I B and, and learning environments. And we're excited about where we're gonna go in the next five years and you'll continue to see these. Be refined and tweaked this year and then brought to you in upcoming budget discussions.
And so our, the, just, um. At the top level, uh, our regional budget, and before I go any further, the school committee has seen this, um, on December sixth. It's slightly different, uh, from an expenditure standpoint. I'm just gonna summarize what the changes were from the last time you saw the budget. We assumed one additional retirement. Actually, we reduced the contingency forty thousand. Uh, whether, uh, how that materializes, whether it's a retirement, um, we, we basically, um, reduce that forty thousand. And we increased chapter seventy funding. It's in the revenue slide. It's not in these expenses. Um, so the chapter seventy revenue, we attended a webinar and we are. I, we're thinking that we'll be able to budget at least fifty thousand, which is what we changed our chapter seventy forecast. From our last presentation. And you'll see the chapter seventy later in the presentation. I just wanted to highlight what the changes were. So overall, we're to three point four eight percent increase. Million two sixty-nine, nine seventeen versus last year. You, you can see the, the main drivers by category are, uh, teaching and instructional support. And, uh, fixed charges, um, and there are some offsets as well. Those are the, 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 the main drivers and we'll go through each of these categories like we did with, um, the CPS budget. Uh, administration is actually a slight decrease and, and, and that's, uh, partly due to reallocation of some costs from their restructuring of the Metco program staff. We actually have more staff, um, but it's not in the administration line. Anymore. It's in teaching and learning. Teaching and instructional support is up four point four percent or eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand over last year. Seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which is the vast majority of that is, um, increases in CCTA salaries. Uh, two point seven five percent of that is the cost of living increase. In addition to the cost of the increase, there's steps in lanes for teachers advancing their education, um, or, um, their. Experience, years of experience. On the non-teacher salary side is seven point two percent increase that includes, um, it's two hundred and eleven thousand, plus cost of living. Plus. Increase, um, experience factor, the steps. Uh, and there's two point F T, two point eight F T E increase, um. For tutors and, and assistants in special ed programs. Overall, um, we, there's an offset of a hundred and forty thousand for a reduction in the professional contingency. From a hundred and fifty thousand to ten thousand. Other school services is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase or four point four percent over the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, and that's driven, um, mostly by the regular ed transportation increases and, uh, the case special education transportation. Maintenance operations is, uh, an increase of three point six percent or seventy-three thousand. Uh, utilities is, uh, one of the drivers. Our buildings and grounds maintenance is another driver. There's contractual increases for maintenance and custodial staff. So there's some fairly. Small, uh, limited increases in other areas despite inflationary pressures. So. I think the three point six percent. It was, was kind of a contained increase. For fixed charges, it's up four hundred and ninety-six thousand or twelve point nine percent from last year. A large portion of that is health insurance increases, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand or eighteen percent. And you might recall this from last time, the main driver of the increase, there's, there's a few factors. One is the nine percent. Projected escalation in, um, premiums that we're anticipating. That, um, will be charged, um, by the insurance companies. In addition, uh, with the change to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have more participation. So increased participation levels are contributing. And there's an increased share by the district on certain plans in alignment with the town, town of Concord's offerings. Uh, retirement, retiree health insurance increased slightly as well. Um, and the retirement assessment increased a hundred and twenty thousand. We did, uh, do some research into that and. Did not anticipate it changing. And the last item is the property liability insurance. Uh, we now have a separate, um, policy with Maya. Set up through the town and, um. Our increase was eighty-eight thousand. That's something hopefully with, with time and experience. Perhaps in the future we'll see, um, some normalization there and perhaps a decrease. And out of district tuitions, the, the, the top line here is misleading. So even though we're, we're decreasing two point seven percent, fifty-five thousand, you, you need to look at both the gross. Tuitions, which are increasing by twenty-two percent and the budget offsets for circuit breaker and IDA. So, um. We are getting more funding, circuit breaker, um, increases when you have, uh. Significant out of district costs. Some of those occurred actually. Um, they started to occur earlier, which is why we're seeing the increase. This is also being driven by. The funding for circuit breaker now, including transportation. It's, well, it's being phased in over time. So, uh, our revenues, um, for circuit breaker and IDA, seven hundred and six thousand are offsetting what would otherwise be a six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar. Increase. So, um, it's a two point seven, uh, percent or fifty-five thousand dollar decrease overall. And looking at this, uh, again, at the top level, um, separate from the DESI categories, the salary and non salaries. Three point six percent from a salary perspective and three point two from a non-salary perspective, uh, three point five percent overall. The increases are on the non-salary side. The drivers are the health insurance premiums, the conquered retirement assessment. Property liability insurance and case transportation. And then on the flip side, the, the reductions are offsets to our debt service decrease. Uh, transportation vehicle replacement. We do have some leases ending. And the out of district tuitions decrease. Uh, that's the net number, um, for out of district tuitions. The salary accounts, the key driver is the salaries, uh, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand for CCTA. Four point eight percent increase. We also have the non-teacher salaries. To include, which is two hundred and forty-five or three point six in, uh, percent increase. The bulk of the CCTA increases, uh, two point seven five contractual cost of living increase. There's some step in lane advancement. And there are limited retirements factored in. And one of the retirements is in a, I believe it's science or math where. We typically need to hire an experienced educator, highly qualified to teach those subjects. So we do not factor in. Hiring somebody with, um, less experience of saving, budget savings. We've reduced the contingency as an offset and the sick or retirement program payouts are decreasing as well. So those are the offsets on the salary account side. Excuse me. Um, so our Esther funding. The Esther funding is a little bit more limited for the region than it is for CPS. You can see the numbers are a lot smaller. And, um, the, these grants were, uh, funded. Based on title one percentages and we have a little more significant title one. Component, uh, percentage of students and CPS than we do in the region. We, we are, um, gonna be using spending down S R two in the, uh, ARPA IDA funds this year. And about half of the S R three, similar to what we're doing in CPS. Uh, in the second half of S R three and FY twenty-four. Uh, these positions are supporting a reading specialist for two years, uh, summer school programs. And then we have the retired M T R S contribution. For the first position listed. That the program, uh, grant deadline is September two thousand twenty-four, which is early in FY twenty-five. So for chapter seventy, I talked about that, um, before the. Projected increase here is sixty-six thousand or two point one percent. We had previously. Projected a sixteen thousand dollar increase. Again, based on. The webinar we attended, we are, and, and, and the data we have on student enrollment, we anticipate a, a bump there. Chapter seventy-one aid, um, we budgeted what we've already realized, um, in terms of an FY. Twenty-two, two revenue. So we're, we're very confident in chapter seventy-one aid. And interest income with, uh, bank account rates higher than zero point one percent. We're gonna earn a little bit more money. Um, so we fact a significant increase there. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand overall. Um, and again, those are based on actuals and trends, uh, and chapter seventy-eight is based on, uh, projection and. Uh, benefit of Student Opportunity Act funding. And our excess and deficiency offset is leveled to FY twenty-three at the three hundred thousand. So of course the towns are interested in the impact to, uh, them and what their assessment will be. This, uh, slide summarizes our. At the top, you can see what our expense budget is thirty-seven million, eight eleven, oh ninety-eight. We have revenue offsets, um, and you can see going down. We have the chapter seventy, seventy-one. These all serve to offset, um, the expenditure budget. And result in, uh, lowering the amount we need to assess the towns. The total that we'll assess to the towns is thirty-three million, two fifty-one, eight thirty. Uh, and you can see the two amounts, uh, respectively for each town are twenty-five, three fifty-seven, eight forty-six. And seven million, eight ninety-three, nine eighty-four. Those represent a one point five eight percent increase for Concord and eight point three seven percent increase for Carlisle. The, 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 the fact that they're not. Even and their different increases is really driven entirely by the percent of students shifting. From, uh, a slightly, basically there's more that, that's twenty-three percent, that point seven four percent that Carlisle. Is getting charged is more than they were getting charged last year based on student enrollment at the high school. So it's about a one percent, maybe even slightly more than one percent, uh, change. And that's on the entire budget so that has a significant impact on the assessments. When we look at our assessments, the town of Concord likes to look at. What they are without the impact of debt. And so you can see that, uh, conquered the increases two point three nine percent without the impact of the debt, which is. We have declining debt service and for Carlisle, it's nine point two two percent. The guideline for the town of Concord is built on the assessment comparison without debt. Their guideline was two point four percent. So we're at two point three nine percent. We're below guideline. And the debt amounts just shown at the bottom, uh, as a reference. The amount, the, uh, the impact to taxpayers, whoever is a little bit, uh, less, and that's the bottom amount. When you do factor in the debt service decrease, it's one point five eight percent to. Concord residents and taxpayers and eight point three seven percent to Carlisle residents and taxpayers. Excuse me. Our excess and deficiency, we projected, um, we projected being almost level, almost exactly level to last year within, um. Almost a thousand dollars. We, um, had rep favorable revenue, um, to what we budgeted. Then we had budgeted to use three hundred thousand. Um, the combination of those leaves us again at one million, six seventy-two. Oh, sixty-eight, which is four point six percent of our operating budget. We're legally permitted to carry up to five percent. So we're fairly close to the, the maximum we're allowed to carry. And that's. Questions?
I have a question. I don't think any of you are gonna be able to answer it, but I'm asking anyway, cause I'm a peach like that. So I feel like I have some of the same concerns like that, that Matt did with respect to. Additional FTS, and this is sort of umbrella, not, you know, for everybody. But I, I do see and can fully intellectualize that it's also tied to. The escalation, I guess, if you will, of like acute student needs that are not just. You know, minor. Do you guys in your professional capacity, like run across? I don't know, conferences, I don't know, wherever you might be professional, um, any discussions about? Where we see this trend? Do we, do, do, do people who know? See this trend is continuing to escalate? Do they see it? As something that's being tied to COVID that we might sort of start to see a decline or, you know, I, cause I think it might be worth. It for all of us to understand like, is this the new normal of like what we're gonna start seeing with respect to? Needs and the demands and pressures placed on schools or? You know, might this cool off, so to speak? Anyone? I know, no, no one wants to touch this one, but I do think it's kind of important.
You know, I, and we do, we are talking about it in all our circles for sure. I know certainly the superintendents are. I think there's a combination of things happening here, so I don't think it's one answer. I think yes, there's pandemic impact and our kids are. Showing the signs of that and the academic and social emotional skills that they're growing and catching up on. But there's also this other. But there's also this other pronounced special education piece that's happening. And I don't have the answers to that. I think we're much better at diagnosing and knowing what services to provide. So much of it is good news for kids where we were potentially unknowingly underserving kids or not having the right etymologies identified and right deliveries in place. But that is probably the biggest driver in terms of just F T E related. That is the biggest driver of the F T E needs. As we look to service more and more complex students. Part of the fourteen year percent increase you're hearing at the private out of districts is they're feeling the same exact need to be sure they're adequately staffed with the right support staff. I know we're having that conversation on the case board, which I'm currently chairing. Case is going to be presenting revised tuitions that we're going to have to look at, not a fourteen percent, we don't think. But the needs are similar and those out of districts are trying to take complex kids that we're not able to keep. So their needs even are, are growing. I don't think there's a quick turn coming. I think the needs are, are very, very complicated and isn't one specific answer. And I think they were growing before the pandemic. I think any of us in education for decades would say the needs of kids that we're working with now versus the ones we started with our, in our careers are, are significantly different. And I'm still processing. Are we just better at naming, identifying, evaluating? I think there's a piece of that. And I think there's a piece of, the world has shifted. There wasn't social media and technology in the late nineties, early two thousands when we were in classrooms initially. That's all added. And our lifestyles are different. Like there's a perfect storm of, of things happening here. Some of it good outcome, some of it very challenging. So it's a great question and one we're all going to be talking about for a while, I think. Yeah.
Any other questions from the table?
I, I think mine is a bit of a follow on to Alexis. At, at a high level, the question that comes forward is, are we, with our declining enrollment, small with our F T E's not so small in, you know, the increases? Are we also calibrating more properly what it means to bring in these in district programs? Did we underestimate needs for those in district programs and the, the costs associated? And the second perhaps related comment is if so much of the budget increase is out of our hands, acute needs sound kind of sacrosanct, can't touch them, got to deliver. Contractual obligations, can't touch them, got to deliver. Then it seems to me this administration, the school committee should be talking about where are the efficiencies that we can carve out with what's left after acute needs and contractual increases. I think a certain segment of this town would love to see this school committee and this administration dig in a little deeper on that before we bring any of these to a vote.
So I'll answer pieces of that. I think Bob shared a really, I think, clear slide that we are still, if we're only going to talk fiscal and not student needs, we are still saving money with our in district programs. There's no question, millions a year. So we can keep fleshing that out. I think the simplicity of the slide speaks for itself. And the population of kids we're able to keep, you know, we're trying to figure out what our capacity is. I think that's the current question. But for every student, if we don't service them in district, they're going to go out of district for well times the money that we're going to spend in district. In terms of digging deep, this is a completely zero based budget. We do that work on our side of the side of the house to bring to you as tight of a budget as possible. It's been really interesting to hear Bob's feedback as we push through zero based. And at the end, he's like, wow, there's really no fluff in here. And I said, right, that's exactly the point. We are reallocating constantly. We don't come with new asks for new F T E's and yet we're doing new things in programming, which we're going to keep talking to you about. We really have dug quite deep. There is some resetting after COVID because we were saving money when kids aren't in school full time. There were savings. And we're readjusting that we've used up those inventories and are, are leveling off. But um, I guess if the committee is asking for any specific questions, we're happy to talk through the processes on our side with the department chairs and administration, especially the high school, the department chairs do a lot of this work now. And that's been a really value added process across the board.
Any other questions from the table? And we are at guideline at the region.
In Concord, Carlisle's got a lot of discussion to be had and we name and recognize the eight percent increase over there is extraordinary and significant and want to be part of that solution. So.
And we'll go over Carlisle January.
January twelfth is our meeting. Yeah.
Well, if it looked like a, a school committee was not faced with an up or down on the administration's first recommendation, what would it look like? And I'm asking my fellow members, if the school committee were to invest more time with the administration to see if we could achieve some efficiencies that would bring us closer to guideline for C E S and reduce the eight percent for, for Carlisle. Because I think just an up or down on, on this recommendation maybe doesn't show our best work. I don't, I don't think it does personally.
We've got more time. Can I vote the number, right? But the number can go down. We can do more work.
I wonder too, like, and maybe I'm intellectualizing it wrong. I'm curious as to what you guys all think, like the way I sometimes approach the budget, maybe this is like wrong or showing too much of my cards. Like there's a part of me that says like, we're, we're, when we vote on this budget, the way I intellectualize it is we're saying, we recognize this is what the superintendent and the administrative team are saying that they need, or do we accept that? And then of course, there's like ensuing negotiations. I don't know if that's the right word, but work that is done afterwards that says, you know, you know, when we have to get to guideline. You know, last year, for example, we voted on the budget and then still did like to your point, Court, like look for more efficiencies, continue to discuss and debate it. So I don't think one precludes the other. I think, and again, that's just sort of the way I look at it. Do I intellectually understand this is what the recommended budget is? Recommended, like then knowing that there's still work to be done. I don't know. I'm open to others.
It seems to me, we, we made some changes with revenue projections. We changed, made some changes with contingency. But I don't call those significant changes. I call those good fortune that fell our way. And we, there might be opportunities to do more.
I'm certainly open to more discussion. What I won't do is compromise what our students need to maintain level service and to provide what special education needs. So I don't know tonight. I don't know if we've got specific categories to look at in the future. But I think that is the budget we brought you. And we're always revisiting and revising and looking at new numbers. But my driver is what the schools need and collaborate with the towns.
And, and I think to that end, it is worth pointing out, at least on the Concord side, because you guys haven't gotten to it, level service, I believe was calculated by the finance committee to be three, at least at Concord, I don't remember the region, three point seven one percent. So we are not, they're not asking for, they're recognizing that if we meet what they ask, it is not a level service budget. I think was, that was part of the conversation. I don't know, several spin com meetings ago. And then that was when Parrishar was doing the spreadsheet and all that. But I do remember a number of three point seven one percent as being identified as level service. The guideline came in at less than that. So we are grappling with something that would be a budget, I think, anyway, that would not be a level service budget.
Well, and I'll just to point to the point made of how we got to the number, because we had some adjusting to do after the debt was adjusted at the Concord side. We took risks rather than taking from kids. And that means we dropped the contingency number. So we have less money to use if things unknown to us come up. And we upped the revenue without having seen the state's cherry sheets. So those are the debates. That's what we did last year at CPS and it was really hard the way it actually played out. We took risks that came to be. And I don't think we want to continue to operate in that situation. That's partly why. And I don't want to talk too much CPS in this regional section, but that is partly why the CPS numbers is high. So. Other questions?
Yeah. I just have a question about, because you know, since I've been here, the, the due dates for budgets
Yeah.
further along here, right? And so sometimes they would actually coincide or come after.
Right.
And now I know, I guess we're returning to this thing, you know, the old.
Yeah. This is pretty much the old normally. Yeah.
So going, I'm just wondering going forward, like, is this always this cat and mouse game with the cherry thing?
Yeah, yes. Yep. Yeah.
And they're coming out a little bit later this year.
Right, with the governor. Yeah.
And tuition, private school tuition, those just kind of roll in when they roll in. Some are set, but some aren't.
Yeah. So they have to set work within the numbers that the state gives them permission to increase. Usually it's two or three percent and the fourteen percent is the difference this year. So if the part that's, if a child stays in a certain placement, we can pretty much predict that is when placements change or new placements come up. So it's not, it's not the year to year increase. That's the hard part. Usually this year it is. It's the movement and shifting of placements or addition of placements. That's hard.
I'm just wondering for those, for, for budgeting for the fourteen percent, one, you know, like how much of that fourteen percent were actually equalized?
So, and you can correct me if you've heard otherwise. What I've heard is we're going to need to front the fourteen percent. And if we get any additional relief, it'll be on the other side, like circuit breaker work. So I don't think we're going to see a decrease. No. Well, they from every indication, they're going to take the fourteen percent.
Why wouldn't you?
Yeah. I, I will say Commissioner Riley spoke to that very specifically on a call with the superintendents last week of they feel there's repair work to be done there, that the out of district settings have had really big challenges in gaining and maintaining the qualified staff they need for the most challenged students. And all the other increases that we worked to, with the towns to absorb, they've had no, they've had two and three percent. So he, he really supported what was happening. He heard our ask for some relief on the big jump in one year, but he reminded us they're all our kids and we need to talk that way.
The same, like whether you be funded by this or whether you pay how, as a parent, it's the same.
Yeah, for the, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, but our, that's the region.
It may even go down more, right, right?
Right.
So both they expertise, like maybe there's a very possible extra.
Yeah.
Possibly, possibly.
Fifty fifty.
All right. Any other questions from the table?
Does a three point nine percent increase that gets you to guideline, does that include the right buffer that you were talking, like avoid the risk taking that you, that you did last year?
It feels comfortable right now with what we know. Because E and D is healthy, circuit breaker is healthy. We've got a, what did we end up at a hundred thousand contingency? There's a contingency line there that allows for maybe an additional staff if something unexpected. One additional staff. So that feels much, pretty solid. So thanks for asking.
Yeah, we're just saying, okay, the, the big safety net there is the, the full, the full circuit breaker. It's like a nine dollars. Having that safety net is important. At CPS, it's, I think we, we had the ability to carry over eight hundred thousand. We only carried over four hundred thousand change. So we don't have the full circuit breaker carryover at CBS. That would.
But the regions.
But circuit breaker can be used for anything?
Circuit breaker can be used for special education.
All right. Other questions from the table? Okay. So at this point in time, I'll entertain questions from the public about the proposed, proposed F Y twenty four budget. So if you'd like to ask questions, you can come on up to the table and state your name and address, or you can raise your hand on Zoom. And Matt Johnson.
Hello. So I guess the most eye opening thing in this budget for me is the health insurance increase. So first of all, it didn't really pop out anywhere near as much in the Concord Public School budget. So that is curious. And then the second thing is this eighteen percent increase is above anything that I can find quoted out there in, you know, on the internet anyway, in terms of rate increases. It, it just seems extraordinarily high. You did talk about an increasing percentage burden of, of the district for certain types of plans. But I know that the town has been proceeding in that direction and has been moving more and more of its population to high deductible plans, which is a consequence of the tax regulations. I mean, can be win wins for both employees and for the employer. And I just wonder how, what rate of participation do the, does the district have among its employees in high deductible plans? And is there any you know, effort to, to move them there? That could then, I think, reduce the impact of having what is a, a, a better, more progressive policy of, of a higher percentage coverage at the same time.
So Matt, we, we, I, before I started, we had an open enrollment. It was the town and the school ran it jointly. So they received the same information in open enrollment. I can tell you that the, the rate increase wasn't eighteen percent. The rate increase we forecast was nine percent. And you, we are our own, we have a very small network that we're part of, the Minuteman Network with some local communities. So what you might see with broad, uh, different carriers out there doesn't necessarily apply to us. I know that we, the reserves the Minuteman program has aren't what they were in the past. So that's a piece of it. The additional enrollments, it's really not that many. It doesn't take that many to add up to a significant percent. It's about the district portion is a little bit more than twenty thousand a year, I think, for, for one of these plans. So what I, what, what struck me, we can certainly look at the participation level. What struck me when I came here was that our benefits number was pretty small because I came from a district about a third the size and our, our premiums, insurance costs weren't that much different than what we had here. So I think what we're seeing is that we've had very low participation rates. And we're seeing a slight increase in participation combined with with the nine percent rate increase. And we'll get more guidance on whether that becomes nine percent or eight percent or something different. But that's the guidance that that we have now. And if we find out something different, we'll certainly look at that.
Yeah, I would just note, since we've offered the high premium, the high premium plan, we've definitely seen more uptick of enrollment there. We've worked really collaboratively with the town. And sold that as best we could and made sure that it's been available. So we've seen that at the region as well, for sure. I do think you're seeing some adjusting. What's interesting is we get feedback a lot. And I know most of the school committees heard this of lower splits. And I think we're seeing with a plan change and a little higher employee offering, we've, we've had, again, not a lot, but a handful of people switch on to the plan that maybe hadn't taken it when they first were employed. So there's a number of variables going on there.
So what about the distinction between the public schools changes in the budget for insurance versus the regional districts?
Right. So the CPS insurance numbers are carried in the town budget.
So we're just not even seeing that there.
Carrie would have that information.
Yeah. Okay. So that's why it, it seems like a tiny difference there versus here. But this is one of those areas where, you know, we were talking about level service and you know, he, here is a place where, gosh, if we could get creative and find a, a solution, you know, you could take money out without taking out service. So.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? In the audience? Hey, I am going to close the hearing. Thank you all. So at this point, we're going to move on to public comment. And just as aging, every night we have assignment sheet outside, we have blue forms outside and our blue form used to be part of what we did here before pandemic. So we brought them back. So as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you'd like to speak, you can spit a blue form to me or all the blue forms, if you like. If you'd like to speak, you can spit a blue form to me, or all the blue forms if you like. And I will call on you to speak, and you can state your name and address before you speak. We will go, every other will start in the ready first, and then we'll go on Zoom. You'll have three minutes, and we have a twenty minute time period as per our policy. So Mrs. Anderson will be my timekeeper. And up first, we have Pat Brewer. And if you could just come on up to the microphone here and state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
I'm Pat Brewer, one thirty-two Wright Road.
Wait, I'm gonna grab your chair.
You know what? Now, this is fine. Pat Brewer, one thirty-two Wright Road. I was not able to be at the meeting on December sixth. There were some disappointing things I heard, and I would like to respond. I'm aware that the novel Ivy Aberdeen's Letter to the World is being questioned by some community members as part of the curriculum. As an educator and private tutor, I have read and discussed this book with middle school students. Additionally, I have supported students as they completed classroom assignments relating to the book and classroom discussions. I would like to commend the administration, teachers and staff for presenting the students with high quality novels that broach topics pertinent to middle school students with respect and sensitivity. I believe this fictional story allows students to see themselves in the curriculum and provides them with an opportunity for thoughtful and tactful discussions. Thank you, all of you, the staff, the teachers, the librarians, for your care and concern in helping all students feel that they belong. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will go for our Zoom audience, and we have Joyce, so please state your name and address.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Joyce DeGrief, and I live at fourteen hundred Lowell Road in Concord. I'm speaking tonight both as a representative from CORE, which is a local organization of community members organizing for anti racism, and also as a parent who is part of a mixed race family with kids who are currently and were previously in the Concord school system. I want to publicly commend the school committee for its encouragement and ongoing support of this district's DEIB initiatives under the leadership of Dr. Hunter and her administrative team. As the school, at the school committee meeting two weeks ago, I heard parent statements that equated the work of DEIB with what's known as critical race theory and a fear that it's doing harm to white children. While I've never been to law school, I know enough about anti racist education to state that this is a falsehood. Diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging may indeed ask us to think critically about our own lives and the life experiences of people different from us. And race is certainly a part of this work, along with other marginalized identity that affect how our children are treated. But there's nothing theoretical about the pain that the kids in our schools experience regularly as a result of who they are on the inside, how they look on the outside, what their learning differences might be, or whether or not their family measures up the upper middle class standard of our town. The lens of DEIB is meant to see all people, recognizing incidents of bias, prejudice and discrimination, and implementing changes so that everyone feels safe and valued. As for this work harming our white kids, that is mind boggling to me. I can attest that my two older white children have never been negatively affected by learning from my two younger kids of color what it's like to go through this world with brown skin. We, as white people, have a choice about how we want to receive anti racist education, with shame and defensiveness, or with gratitude for the way that it broadens our minds and instills empathy. The work of DEIB is crucial for the education of all of our kids as students and as human beings. For the most vulnerable, it can be life affirming, life changing, and in some cases, quite literally, life saving. This work is long, hard, and sometimes even painful. But I believe we can do hard things together, and I thank you again for the role that you all play in helping our schools to become a place that's rooted in authentic relationships and trust, rather than isolation and fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Three minutes to the second. Joyce DeGrief, I think you practiced. Wow.
We're gonna go back into the room. Anyone else? We're gonna go back online, and it looks like we have Mary Beth Stevenson, so I'm gonna leave it there.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Stevenson, two seven one Cross Street in Carlisle. But I am also the Vice President of the Concord Teachers Association. And in the spring, I was the representative to the Health Insurance Group of Union Leaders that the town puts together. And one of the things that all of us as union leaders, if you talk to fire, police, DPW, is we would like more options for our members to look at other companies other than Minuteman Health as we felt there were better options out there that would benefit all the members as well as benefit the town and potentially have cost savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any other public comment from our Zoom audience? Haven't seen them. We're gonna close our public comment. Thank you. Um, CCH has updates. We have a track star who's at the New Balance Track Facility right now, which is beautiful, by the way. If anyone's been there yet, you should go. The high school is now going there, so Harry is in the traffic right now. Felicity's not able to come, and I'm now looking.
Felicity and Zaria are here.
Yep. All right, so Felicity and Zaria, I'll leave it to you guys.
Hi, okay, sorry, give me one second. I just need to pull up the presentation. Sorry. Okay, can everyone see?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, sorry, you wanna start?
Okay, hi. Winter, winter break is, it starts Friday, and we have a half day Friday, which everyone is excited about because, you know, half days.
Um, on Friday, we're also going to have the chorus pop up concerts, which it really only started last year, but it was a huge success because the chorus kids get to like go around to the different breakout spaces, and we sing lots of holiday music, which everyone really likes. It gets them in the mood for break. And of course, people get to miss their last couple of classes, which is also nice.
It's a pain.
I really appreciate your honesty. There is some stress due to increasing workloads. I know me, you know, myself and Felicity have both experienced like a lot of, a lot more work over the past few weeks. I know that some teachers are working to prevent this by like coordinating when tests and assignments are due, but it still is very stressful.
Yeah, I think that's mostly because it is the week before break. Hopefully, it's, it's not normally like this. But this past Saturday, there was also the CCHS instrumental concert Prism. I wasn't able to go because I was eating birthday cake. But I heard. Thank you. It was a huge success, and there were also bubbles, which everyone is talking about the bubbles.
The bubbles were quite something, yes.
Um, also, there have been a lot of early decision college decisions, so there's a lot of energy in the senior class.
Um, two weeks ago, we had our district planning session on December seventh, December seventh. That went well, and we even finished early.
Yeah.
It was delicious, it was delicious, very delicious. Um, tomorrow, we have an advisory activity, it's the Cookie Fest. I'm actually making, there's a bunch of cookies behind the camera, actually, because I'm bringing them all in. I'm really excited for that, so.
Yeah, it's like a nice little advisory, competition between advisories. I made red velvet cookies, so hopefully that's, that beats Zaria's sugar cookies, anyway. CC Theater also announced their Spring Musical, which is going to be Into the Woods. So there's also been a lot of excitement around that, and it's going to be the weekend of May eleventh to thirteenth. So still a couple of months to go, but good to be on the lookout for more info about the show.
Um, I think there's some type of sickness going around. I was sick last week, and I think half of the teachers are out. I'm not sure if it's personal reasons. A lot of teachers out, so I'm assuming the sickness is going around, but.
There is a lot of illness, there's no question. Thankfully, not COVID, but flu and other things are coming to get people.
Mm-hmm. And then we only have two other short updates. Um, Green Team is doing composting in the cafeteria, which is nice. And Class Gov is also doing, they're selling candy canes to like deliver to people on the last day of school, which last year, that was also very exciting for everyone. So, yeah, we didn't have that much this week since it's the week right before break, but, yeah.
Wow.
Great, those are great.
Yeah, they are. Felicity, I know that you were in this play in the fall, and it seems that you keep referencing chorus as a we. So I'm assuming you are also in the chorus. Will you audition for Into the Woods?
Yeah, I'm.
Do you have a part you want?
Um, I'm still.
I know, well, I would know.
Um, I'm not quite sure if I have the time to do the Spring Musical, which I really want to, though. Hopefully, I'll be able to, but yeah, I am part of chorus, so it's, I'm definitely a big performing arts kid, yeah.
Well, you know, the school thing wouldn't be opposed to cookie fest, you know, at the school committee meetings sometimes.
Yeah, Zaria, we should bake some cookies and bring them into school.
No pressure.
We also take leftovers.
And juniors would take, I don't know, I pray did it last.
It was amazing last week. I didn't get there, but I saw the pictures, so it's gonna be a great time.
I might help make some cookies for ninth grade, too, so I could participate if we.
We all had to make like six or seven dozen cookies, so I think.
Oh, my God.
Leftovers.
They had more bakers, I think, they only made one dozen.
You girls must be busy.
You're busy. All right, well, thank you so much for spending your time with us the week before break.
Thank you.
Before it's a happy Friday.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Holidays.
Like the first time I get to say that, see, and it's you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank.
Bye-bye.
Right, now we get more students, I think CCHS art is coming up, Dr. Hunter.
Yeah, so I know Mr. Pickman's here, so hi, Joe. So we've invited as recognitions different programs from the high school, so we wanted to showcase the arts tonight. So we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Pickman, the department chair, and he's gonna offer some highlights. And I believe there's a really great video coming with a lot of students and other information. Oh, you're on mute, Joe.
Yeah, it's been a long time, time since I zoomed, but.
That's a good thing, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, does this still work? But it works great. Thank you so much for having me. It's a, it's a privilege to present to you, and there's so much exciting things going on in the art department. We, the architecture class went on a trip to the Gropius House, and that was pretty fantastic and inspiring. And if you haven't been, people travel from all over the nation to visit that Gropius House. People are studying architecture. And one of the things we talked about were elements that Gropius sort of established in the architecture world that are present in the high school. So it's kind of interesting to see like those handles that aren't the twist handles, little things like that. Anyhow, there was also a great collaboration between John Linder and Jamie Andrade, who did a Raku firing, and they had an aesthetic disposition towards it. They studied the science and the chemical reactions that are happening during a Raku firing. And we actually, in the gallery at the high school, we are just putting the finishing touches on a show that highlights all the disciplines and classes that we run at the high school. It's, the aim of that show is to hopefully inspire people to sign up for an art course and see how fun it is. But we also have a little section now, happenings in the art department, just candid of kids in the classroom, and it's, it's pretty wonderful. So next time you go to high school, go see that, that exhibit. I could go on, but we made this wonderful video, which we are gonna, which is all about student voices, which was our real intention to share with you tonight. So, so if Erin, you wanna cue the video? It's about eight minutes long.
I am Lila Carter, class of twenty twenty-three, and I TA here at Intro to Darkroom Photography with Mr. Cohen. And through TA-ing, I found a new way to spend even more time in the darkroom and get to teach other kids about my passion. Right here, I'm trying to incorporate different types of media into my photography. So I am using some oil paints on top of a type of fiber paper that I already printed on.
Hey, Mr. Cohen.
What's up, Cole?
Can I put a bagel through the dryer?
Uh, no.
How about pizza? How about pie?
Beef.
A waffle?
What about marshmallows?
What about?
Pop tarts?
Pop tarts, toaster shiggles.
What about the deep and deep?
Pancakes, French toast. Cupcakes. How about a frozen pizza? How about Girl Scout cookies? How about spaghetti? Mr. Cohen, what about popcorn?
Hey, Mr. Cohen, what about a grilled cheese?
Hi, I'm Gretchen Headlands. I'm in the class of twenty twenty-five, and I'm taking darkroom photography this semester. This class has helped me deal with my stress because it allows me to be creative and I can do my work independently at my own pace. I've had a lot of fun shooting pictures outside of school and in school. It's really fun to learn about photography. This is my friend Anika at the train station. And so my friends Anika and Felicity in a park.
Hi, I'm Jamie Richard, and I'm doing ceramics right now. Um, so one of the reasons that I love doing ceramics is because of all the like opportunities I get, and it's sort of like a creative outlet for me. You know, I started with intro ceramics, and then I did advanced ceramics, and now I'm doing an independent study. And the reason I did that was just because there were like so many opportunities. And I think it's really great that we have like our own classroom and a designated space to do our work. And we have a bunch of cool tools, which like allow me to like do different like things and explore different techniques. And so, you know, these are some of my works, and I really love how they came out. They were kind of like different shapes, and this one's a crystalline glaze, which was a really fun glaze I got to try out. And I just love how it came out with like all like the specs, and yeah.
Ceramic teacher John Linder partnered with the Rivers and Revolutions Program to conduct a Raku fire in the school parking lot. Students had the opportunity to make their own ceramic pieces here in the ceramic studio and then bring them outdoors to have a hands-on firing experience. Students were able to participate in both the heating and cooling elements of this process and later return to their classroom to study the scientific process of Raku in their equilibrium unit.
And I'm a sophomore.
My name's Ben Wasserman, I'm a junior.
Um, this is my first year taking digital photo, and I took it because I really wanted to learn how to use a camera and take nice photos.
This is also my first year taking digital.
This is also my first year taking digital photography and I took it because I wanted to learn how to take pictures and edit them.
Uh, my favorite project so far has been taking pictures of the fall leaves because everyone in the class had a different photo and they all turned out really nice.
My favorite project so far was the light writing because it's something that you can't really do without a teacher teaching you how to do it.
So this is, uh, my first station that I finished. It's, uh, right in, uh, Lynn Center, right at a, like a a crossroads. Um, it's called Carol. Um, as you can see, I got, uh, kind of a sculpture and then two pieces, two perspective images, and there's also a floor plan, but so here you go. You've got the crossroads right here and Carol's on this green space. Um, I tried to use mostly unused areas, so areas in between roads in gray space, in any sort of abandoned areas, uh, in order to kind of like challenge myself and see you know, what I could come up with that fits these kinds of shapes. This is Linside, which is the station that would go immediately after the current terminus, which is Wonderland. Um, and so Linside is kind of right on the edge of Lynn, kind of the cusp of the city. This is probably where I would get off to meet my friend. Um, it's in a, it's in a gr- a great place. It's kind of the sunken station with like a sort of a T shape. Walkway area on top, uh, and yeah, and that's the, uh, the unfinished sculpture for it.
Uh, hi, I'm Jackson from Perkyo and I'm a freshman. I chose to do film because I, my aunt and uncle are in the film industry. Um, and it's something that I wanted to pursue as a career. And this course helps me with a jumpstart in learning the technical, technical side of, um, learning that how to even make movies and how to, uh, edit, how to do all sorts of stuff. One thing that we're doing in film is stop motion right now. And it's not like the typical movie, which is like the camera filming a video. Stop motion is like multiple photos strung together to make a video, which allows you to, uh, create worlds and places that aren't real. But, um, make them seem as if they're real and allows you to use your more creative side. Um, another reason that I like film and that I chose it is because it allows me to focus on stuff that, um, I'd rather do, that helps me like with, uh, de-stressing and just uh, working with the, um, less stressful and more creative, uh, stuff. It's really fun too, and, um, I, I really want a career in the film industry and this, I think will help me a lot with that.
Hi, my name is Maisie Pharaoh. I'm a senior at C C H S and I'm taking filmmaking class here. Um, some of the films I've made include a stop motion animation and, um, a documentary plus some other just narratives and fictional stories. It's a ton of fun and I love it. This is my third time taking the course, so I really do love it.
Okay, hi, my name is Clara Lewis and I'm a senior here and I'm taking A P Art. So beginning of the year, we worked on watercolor technique and so I practiced some techniques here, making sure I knew what I was dealing with. Um, and then once I felt ready to create a piece, I started sketching a bit and just making sure I had my ideas down. And then I began on the biggest paper I've ever worked on and it was really difficult. And I simply did not like this piece at all and I wanted to do it again, but I was kind of hesitant, but I was encouraged by the program to do it again and I finally did this piece because I mastered my skill in watercolor and I'm very thankful that I was able to make something. I was finally out of third row and error.
Wow, thank you, Joe. You're muted again, Joe.
I really want to thank, uh, Jamie, uh, for putting those together. We each made a little bit of these films and she sort of brought it all together in, uh, that presentation, which, uh, was so much stronger than I was expecting. And the kids are just so wonderful and, uh, they made so many awesome points. Uh, one thing I really loved about the video is that it shows the studios and the equipment we use and what a dynamic and wonderful place it is, uh, to work and to make art and um, so thank you.
It's really great.
It's awesome.
Really great and so it was such great offerings at the high school and I think that sometimes people don't even know what's out there, so it'd be great if we could even share this video somehow.
Oh, no, I'm going to share it.
I mean, I know my own kids have many different opportunities in, in the art department and, and I think that sometimes, you know, people need to see what you're really doing in those classrooms.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank everyone for us.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Joe.
Great. Um, on to our chairs, ladies and gentlemen, let us report. So we start, we can start and then we'll go around.
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll start. Emily and Lauren. So we'll start, go around the room and then enter our superintendents. Um, okay, so this, well, one big exciting meeting that we had this week was a meeting with Verizon um, to talk about the potential of a cell phone tower on the C C H S campus. So we were at the very beginning stages of that. Um, we have some significant, uh, cellphone loss up there as I think many of you know who've experienced it, giving the same safety issues for the students in the building, for the staff, and there's, there's literally no communication in the building, so. Um, we're anxiously awaiting some more information on that. That was fun for, that was really, well, wasn't really the largest meeting we had, but that was one meeting we had this time. We obviously last week had a bunch of, um, what would you call it? Threat assessment meetings there. Uh, we'll spell threat assessment, so we did a lot of that. It's up here, our work, um, what's on Lucy, so we're thankful for that. And I think we just.
We had our capital planning, final capital planning session. That's about it.
Yeah, and we have a chair's breakfast tomorrow. Um, and then the only thing that I have to report on in terms of a, a committee that I sit on is the D E I B Strategic Planning Committee, which meets again tomorrow night, I believe at six to seven? Six to seven. Um, and we had a great presentation last time. Kristen and Andrew jointly did it. We talked about all the professional development offerings happening. Um, Andrew will have some updates for us in January, so our school committee, yeah, the meeting. That was the one that we rescheduled is on, I'm gonna get the date running. I know I am. I believe it's January seventeenth.
It is. I just accepted the invitation.
Right, so we will see you all then and, um, that's all I had. Do you have anything else to add?
No, um.
Question?
Yep.
On the cell phone tower conversation, what is the timeline for when it might be at like a, on an agenda for us to talk about? Like, is it like months away, weeks away, years away?
Okay, February, maybe, maybe February. I think that, um, maybe there's gonna be an initial visit just to kind of check out the campus, but we wouldn't hear anything until February.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is Verizon pitching the idea of two towers in town or singer?
They've been working with.
They need to. One at the campus isn't gonna fix the issues in downtown Concord, so there's still active hope on their part for the umbrella, whatever options are really central downtown, so.
And as a short-term, uh, crisis, uh, mediation, if you will. Have we looked at, uh, putting V O I P extenders around the high school so that people can pick up, uh, internet on the property?
We've tried a lot of that. I think according to Peter Kelly, who I harass weekly about what our options are up there, we've really maximized what, what's there.
There are nodes or whatever.
We've got nodes. We, we, we keep adding. There's a repeater on the top. There's some extenders. We tried to do that after a crisis last year where we had administrators outside with a student couldn't reach help. Um, minimal though. Minimal, minimal, minimal.
Can, can you just check with him? Because we have outside access points at the school where I work and we have really good coverage outside and specifically for that, it really was because of COVID?
Yeah.
So we could have, but now when we go outside for a drill, everybody, you know.
Yeah, I know we have had a few and we did some in COVID. I think the need is far greater than any Wi-Fi extensions are going to meet. That seems to be united consensus. So yes, we can certainly check to see if we can do more. But the need is for cell service.
What we have outside.
And I think, you know, when we were talking about it, you know, you can have a, a student crisis outside. You could have a student crisis on a bus. Um, a medical emergency on a field, like there's really no reception anywhere up there. And, um, you know, this is not for like students to be texting their parents. This is literally for emergencies and we don't have that, so. That's what kind of spurred this, you know, meeting with Verizon. I think that's all I, I have on that. All right, so, okay, let's start with Carrie. Did you have anything?
We had the strategic planning meeting this week. I don't know if we, um, I mean, I, I think it was a great meeting. We talked about, um, we kind of furthered our efforts around what does it look like in five years? And then we broke into groups to talk about. Okay, well, this, these are all of the visions that all of these different groups, um, and stakeholders have come up with. We, Kristen did an amazing job of actually sorting them for everybody. So then we went through in our groups and, um, kind of drafted an initial outline of what, um, what the goals would look like in five years. So from, um, off the top of my head, like, you know, D E I B and, um, the actual environment, physical environment to, um, wellness, health. Um, there are lots of different categories. We kind of went through item by item and really picked out, um, what was, looked for themes and, and began to draft it. So it was a lot of fun. Kristen did a great job facilitating at court to you where they're.
No, very much sure that it was session two and it was themes and patterns that were emerging out of the, the data that came from the fifteen people involved.
I thought it was really interesting that like you could see from the different comments where they were coming from, from the different schools, the aid groups, the, you know, demographics. How there were like some things that were like consistent across the board and what, what the unique, you know, environmental aspects came into place. I, I thought it was a really fun experience, so, and it's been great getting to know some of the different people in different pockets of the community, so I've enjoyed it. Thank you.
And you guys have two more meetings left, right?
Okay, isn't it five?
There's two more large group meetings.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Uh, and then I assume eventually we'll come back here for discussion, but.
Yes.
I think so. Yeah, I think that was your process last time, right?
Which is why we're not bringing.
Yeah, right, right, right. Yeah.
Great job representing, okay, thank you both.
And then the only other thing is policy, which is on the agenda for later, so I don't think I have anything on that.
Uh, I think, uh, apropos of what you just reported, I'll mention that last night at Select Board, uh, the Select Board and Town Manager also spoke, spoke about strategic planning and, uh, referenced what, uh, we're doing here. Kristen, I think you were called out by name and, uh, there was a lot of praise for the process happening here with the idea that maybe the town side of government might look to us as a model. However, I also got the sense that maybe they are gonna be a little more operational, uh, than we are um, in, in their efforts, so that'll have to get teased out. Uh, but anyway, um, they're, they know what we're up to and, uh, they know how favorable it has been so far and how favorable they were five years ago and how the town has been a little bit, uh, absent on that side. Even though they've done their envisioned Concord work and some other very good work, it's not exactly a strategic plan per se. They spoke to the, uh, Capitol article, which I referenced earlier. I won't repeat that. Uh, they spoke to their budget with perhaps half a million dollars allocated toward, uh, middle school solar. It would be a move toward the first five and a half million. Ultimately, then if there's storage, maybe ten million, a lot remains to be seen. And the comment was, why five hundred K? Uh, is it a drop in the bucket? Um, does it really solve anything? Uh, sort of a rhetorical question there, um, to the question, why the middle school? The, uh, answer on the part of the Select Board and the Town Manager is quite simple. It's because of the eighth circuits in town. This one has the capacity to uh, take whatever we generate there. Um, so it's really just a favorable location. The next, uh, last night was the D E I Commission. A lot of members and community members showed up for that presentation. And where it relates to the schools is twofold. One, they talked about their survey, how the town survey has yielded something less than three hundred responses. They love more. They referenced, uh, Superintendent Hunter's social media efforts to help the school, uh, parents and population know about that survey. And then there was a reference to, uh, I think it was, is there a school committee member in the room? I don't know if they knew I was there.
We heard that.
And, and it was in reference to surveys, so, uh, knowing I've gotta manage my boundaries because I'm not a chair and we didn't discuss it here. But I did share with them that yes, we too are doing internal surveys and I left it at, I'm certain that we'll, uh, collaborate. What that means is gonna be up to the various chairs, I'm sure. Um, but at any rate, a lot of positive energy around the town's, uh, efforts there. And does that, oh, and then finally, on, uh, something that we don't have to think about until next April, uh, we as a elected body um, are invited to attend and participate in, which means marching in the Patriots Day Parade. Uh, it wouldn't be the first time a contingent of school committee has done that, so that's April seventeen. And the invitation is out there and our chairs have the necessary paperwork. If we can get, uh, two or three of us, I don't think it'd be fun for one of us to do it. More to come on this.
Couldn't even hold it.
They mentioned quite a few times with the reporting system.
Oh, forgive me. Yes, and particularly the Belmont reporting system, yeah.
They did call out the school.
Sorry, it wasn't my notes and so I'll speak to it for a minute and then you can, you can help me with it. Um, they touted the, the D E I Commission, the town one. The Belmont system as a model and referenced the town reporting and the school reporting and how it was yielding real and usable data. And then the comment was made, easy to find the school material, not so easy to find the, uh, material on the municipal side in terms of, uh, incident reporting, and that's really what we're talking about is incident reporting. And, uh, we were not asked to weigh in on that fortunately because, uh, it wasn't something we were just, had discussed and were ready to, but yeah, that was, uh, central to it. I think their presentation was urging the town to make moves on it. And, and I guess that was the, the dominant theme at their conclusion was urgency, you know, do it right, but uh, we have no time to waste was, uh, the real refrain, um, throughout their presentation. Such that, uh, I think the town manager will find some, uh, uh, immediate monies to, uh, support their efforts.
Well, it's great. We have so much already in place here and, you know, at our January seventeen meeting, we will get the equity audit. We'll be talking about that, so. You know, I think, I feel like we're in great shape in the schools in the sense that we have all the right people in place and we're going for a process, so that sounds good. All right, thank you, Court. Uh, Sharon, Sarah?
Just, uh, D I B group had a, um, fundraiser for the town. It was a Pokemon uh, Palooza, which was very successful. Um, the young kids, uh, I think was grades up to grade four participated. And for two hours, they traded their Pokemon cards and they had a, um, individual from a shop here in Concord. Am I incorrect? I think it was, uh, they had a professional there to help them trade and things of that nature, so it was very successful and I think that's something they're going to do in the future again.
And then the other big thing happening parallel tonight, um, is William Shaw's, uh, thirteenth birthday and so William Shaw passed away unfortunately when he was nine. Um, and it's important to the school committee to know, I think, because all of his classmates were, are in seventh grade right now, um, and they have really banded together to form a new club, um, that shines light on childhood grief. Um, and that's become a vehicle for a lot of kids learning how to work through a lot of very challenging conversations and to sort of to normalize these conversations and, uh, and so I think it's just something that you should be aware that this group is soon rising up and will be joining, you know, all the Concord kids in a couple of years.
And I think that, um, high schools were involved in it too. I did see it on the, I don't know if anyone's a part of the C C H S Know Day Watch. I shouldn't even say those words, but, um, it was posted on, it was posted on there. Driving here tonight, I mean, obviously the concentration, so the, the way that the, that his birthday is remembered every year is that. Everybody puts green lights, luminaires in their yards or whatever by their house. And so, and there's a map you can go online. They have a whole, there's, there's a nonprofit that's all started from this, yeah, be yourself challenge and. And but there's a map and so the concentration of the, the light kits are obviously in Carlisle, but they're also in, I mean, driving here tonight, I passed through a number of them also in Concord. And they're actually across the world. Their family members and friends all over the country and world. Really, really phenomenal thing.
Steven said nice writer.
And so it's a Carlisle School Committee. We also had our budget hearing recently. How much to report on that? The only thing to note is that Jack, our chair and Jim talked about. This podcast that recently came out sold a story. I don't know if anybody has listened to it. No. It's, it's all about literacy and the teaching of, of reading. Fascinating. If you don't have time for the six episodes, instead on NPR, on point, there's sort of a half hour. Succinct version. And so Jack and Jim would like to have a really concentrated school committee conversation about this. About the findings of the takeaways and what are we doing to keep up with the science of, of literacy. So that'll let you guys know when we're planning to have that conversation. So that's sort of, that's the big stuff in Carlisle. Comfort Carlisle Dalton Community Ed. So in addition to their perennial favorites like Armchair Traveler and. Boating courses and all that stuff, as you know, they've now also assumed the work of the. Center for Parents and Teachers, right? They recently just were granted a two thousand dollar. Ordered a grant to help do these. And so I just wanted to share to that point about. How are we helping our kids get through all of these challenges? They do have a few really fascinating. Speaker event coming up, one about TikTok. One about building resilience and managing big emotions, one about cell phones and parenting. And the other is about time management. Oh no, sorry. Yeah, there's another, and, and then one about bullying and cyberbullying. So all information can be found online and probably also in the bulletin. That and then sped. Last month, there is a big, Kristen and. From, from the school came to talk about five oh four I E P M T T S and like. How can, what are the paths for students accessing accommodations and what are the ways that teachers are now becoming empowered to offer? Accommodations through the M T T S and. So that was really. Interesting and. There's a lot of information, a lot of information there. And then just there was the said, a regular business meeting the other night. And we talked a little bit about that. They talked. And now I'm blanking on what was the first part.
So they did. Update on the strategic plan and what they were recommending. So that's why I'd like to get a. A download from the chairs and CPAC because they, they went through a lot of topics that I think would be valuable to us and I wasn't taking notes. That carefully, but I think if we can hear from the chairs, like a little memo or something, because they did say what their recommendations were going to be.
From CPAC?
Yes. To the strategic planning?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know they talked about the, I know they talked about the. The escalation space.
That was a lengthy conversation as well. And I don't, I'm not sure if they're, if they even were going to approach the building committee with the recommended, it wasn't really clear.
Yeah. So I met with them prior to that meeting. So, and some of them sit on the strategic planning team. So that was the vehicle to gather their feedback there. The, the de-escalation room is a middle school building discussion that we tried to be sure we answered all their questions. So I think we've been answering them as we go.
But I, I don't know if you talked to them after that CPAC meeting, that's what I'm saying.
I have not talked to them since then, but Debbie was there and didn't bring me any updates. So.
Can I talk about summer school? I talked about, yeah, I mean, it's just their general. But so the, the big highlight really was that five oh four I E P M T.
Yeah.
If we can share that information out to more parents, I think that would be really neat. I think, yes, those are my, my reports. Thank you.
So, um, I think we, D I, Commission in Concord has been working very hard to come up with the recommendations they presented last night. They usually meet at noon weekdays without a Zoom. They meet again on Thursday to go over their session with the select board. So I'll try to be there. The other thing is, I think almost everybody in Concord was there. There was a joint, a joint meeting, I guess it was called. But it was sponsored by the D I Commission. But I think almost every Concord police officer was there, or at least most of them.
Well, I did try to, then I said, is everybody here? And they said, no, actually thirty six police officers. Yeah, I did not know that. And I think eighteen were there.
Yes.
So they were like, somebody has to be on.
I think it was a hundred people maybe total was there. Yeah. So it was a very successful event and I think. And it was really just introductions and then people all had all these little smaller conversations, which I think was really great. So it wasn't just filled up with presentations and everybody walked away. So it was a really great collaborative event. Hands off to the people who put that together.
And the other thing I should mention is there's a coffee on Thursday for Chief O'Connor. One that would like to attend that, to thank him for the service. He is retiring and I really appreciate Chief O'Connor. Especially in the past few weeks. So thank you for all the assistance with everything and anything that he's done for the girls, yeah, for the town.
Yeah, he's been here for. Eight years, but before that, I think he was twenty five years with the MBTA. So, yes, I think he's brought a lot of. Great community efforts. And I think we're, we're going to miss him for sure. He's. Got a great person as the interim, who's been here for a long time and who he's been really working with very collaboratively for a long time. So. I think we're in good hands, but yes.
I think that D E I Commission coffee, it was a joint sponsored by the police department. So.
Yes.
I think they all put it together together. It was just great. Yep. So thank you for that.
I'd like to add. The MECO families will be meeting after the holidays to discuss steps for the next year. The second half of the school season to see what can be done to increase participation, not only in the group, but within the school community. So hopefully after this next meeting, I'll have some more information about where our plans are moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a few highlights. One, I've started, already made contact with our two new state representatives. Representative Gentile and Cataldo have both been in touch with me. So they're both going to come here sometime in January. So it's important to have that relationship established and very responsive to my outreach before they're even totally, fully on board. Pretty exciting discussion brewing with the C C S chess band. They've been invited to be at the Patriots Day Parade as a lead up towards the two hundred and fiftieth parade in twenty twenty five. It does turn out that our drums, the ones you have to hang over yourself to walk and mark are a little. Under the condition they need to be in. So we had a great conversation with Chris Nochi and actually one of the select board has. Been engaged in this, getting us invited. And so we are going to start to replace those. We're, they're not, they're. Kind of amazingly pricey. So we're going to do it in phases, but a lot of great energy going there. And I think I shared with you via email, via email. And you'll hear tonight when I'm excited, Chris Nochi is going to pick up the, and then I flag and keep it going. So that's exciting. You probably saw a picture sometime late last week of the Playbook Initiative Middle School. Small representative of them, but a, a, an amazing one that got an opportunity to be on the floor, parquet floor of the Celtics. It's a pretty stunning shot to have come your way Friday night. So we're excited by that recognition. We were notified by Desi that we received a little over fifteen thousand dollars per district in the D E I. Grant process towards hiring, recruiting and retention of diverse staff. So excited by that opportunity. We do have to get ourselves. Implementing that pretty quickly. The money has to be spent by the end of June. So we're ready to roll on that. It's a little slower than we anticipated. One really, I think, fun note and I think going to be important note and. Alex, I'll embarrass you for a minute because you're here. We're talking, I'm talking with the. S M M A, our architects for the middle school has been a front leader in the work to try to work toward changing plumbing codes because they're really. Outdated in towards neutral, gender neutral bathrooms and really the options and ways you can approach that, especially in new construction. I had to go before the plumbing board to get even the smallest variants to set up the pre-work. So if the rest of the code changes, you'll have options to be more flexible. It was a pretty eye opening experience, just in terms of the process. It's very inconsistent. The district ahead of us got denied. I'm really not sure why they got denied and we didn't like sort of eye opening. And so our spectrum. Kids had been already meeting with the safe schools folks at the state level. That looped around back to our architecture firm because they're the front leaders working with the state. And this amazing loop happened of our kids and our design team in the state. And us being in a really interesting position, I think, to try to get this momentum going. It's been a lot of delay in the plumbing board, even considering the changes. So the Spectrum. Team met with the architects and gave us feedback on the middle school, which was really important. And then we're going to try to join forces, work with safe schools. I'd like to activate the superintendents. I think. The legislators, like getting others aware and see if we can make some positive change for kids. I can't say enough about what the kids shared with us about. The challenges of gender neutral bathrooms in our current in schools and we, we have to find ways to do better in new construction. So. I'm so excited by that. And then the, the last piece, I can't. Leave the meeting without an incredible thank you. First and foremost to the Concord Police and their extraordinary reaction last week. They took everything very seriously and assertively and. I, I just can't say thank you enough. And the outpouring of support has been overwhelming in a. Pretty surreal situation to say the least. So. So thank you. Thank all of you. I know I had your support through it all and. Just glad to have that. Client, you know, that Pete behind me. I think it's not gone, but glad to be on this side of that experience last week. So. So thank you.
Thank you. Great. So moving on, we're going on to the reading of the minutes. And we have the minutes from November twenty second that we should have received from Erin. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minute from November twenty second. Thank you, Erin. All in favor? Very much. Course comments.
Sure. We had five pieces of correspondence at Concord Public Schools. All expressing their support and admiration for the superintendent.
And we had six pieces of correspondence at the region. Two were about literature. Two were about public comment from our last meeting. We had, thank you, Lori, in the district, and then we had one piece of correspondence, but it was a policy. That is it. So on to discussions. Onto discussions. So we are going to our policies and I am going to actually turn it over.
Great. So. Thanks. So. We had a meeting last week about, we're starting to review all of the K. And L policies. Many of them have not been reviewed since two thousand five or two thousand six. We got through a good chunk of them in the, the first meeting that we had. And the recommendation out of the committee, I'm just going to go through, I feel like it's important to kind of talk about all of them and then we'll go piece by piece for discussion if that's okay. So the recommendation. That we made as a committee unanimously or as a committee of the whole was to. Keep, so the K policies are all about community relations. So the recommendation was to keep K A, update K A based on M A S C's recommendations. And then strike K E C, K E B, K E B R and amend K E to include updated M A S C language. So going through these kind of one by one, the overarching policy around K, K A sets the stage for all of the K. Policies, the new language, it includes the same sentiment as the, as our current policy, the new M A S E language. But it's just stronger and it includes some more additional language. It includes. Not just effective, accurate communication, including volunteer, volunteer programming, but also. It adds recognition programs that publicly honor and contributions of our students, employees and community. Partners and express pride in our individual collective accomplishments. And then it talks about community service efforts. So this, I think, is just the, what we talked about with K A is that this is just a stronger. A stronger policy. That better communicates how we hope to partner with the communities in which we, we work. So I'd love to open it up as anybody has any comments on K A. For the first read.
And just for people in the audience, the K policies are generally about community relations.
Yep. And this one, K A is specifically school community relations goals. So it is setting the tone for all of the K. Our community relations policies.
So I think you said the important thing. It's, it's a tone setter as opposed to. Strict guidelines that those follow.
Yeah. And I think what we talked about in the meeting was how it's really important to get this one right because as we go through all of the other. You know. Dozen K policies, we want to look back and say, does it align with what we want all of these policies to. Represent. So.
They were all great.
Okay. So the second one on the agenda is K E. Okay, so K E is public complaints. The initial version that we have. This is very similar to the initial version that we have. It has added language and it has sort of. Molded all of these other policies that we're going to be reviewing, K E, K E B, K E B R and K E C into this one policy. So this will become a comprehensive policy on how the, both CPS and the region. Will accept complaints on personnel, on. On curriculum, on instruction, on all kinds of matters would come through this policy and it sets a, a. A process. It goes to the teacher first, the school building administrator second, to the superintendent third. And ultimately to the school committee if it gets to that point. And that, so I think what they've done now is they've taken these four policies, one, two, three, four, three policies, four policies, including. Put them all into one and they've made K E, they've, they've made K E stronger. So when we talked about it as a committee, we felt like this was a strong, this new language was a strong policy. And that it. Could replace K E B, K E B R and K E C.
Great.
Anybody have any thoughts on this one?
That book is thick and anything we can do to streamline it and it's like not only streamline it, but also make it better is. I think why.
And I do think this does, does make it better. It's a lot. Instead of having a way to issue a complaint about a personnel this way, a way to issue a complaint about instruction this way, this kind of makes it all similar. So yeah, makes it a lot easier.
Better and easier for the community.
Yeah, yep.
That's what it's all about. Okay.
As the Carlisle District.
Again, no. Our instructional material one is really focused on library. Our instructional material one is really focused on library, um, because I think that. Yeah, we, yeah, it's focused just on, on library materials and sort of references other instructional materials that. Assuming that most of the conversations around that would be what's available in the library rather than what's um. We don't really talk about um, in class. This is the prerogative. Ours really reinforces um, the diligence and the faith we have in our. Library um, teachers and our teachers in general. Like that's the beginning of our, of our policy actually affirms. That we have faith in. Teachers, library teachers to. You know, choose books that along with our district goals and missions that are in keeping with those level of development that are et cetera. There are five or six characteristics or whatever that we say we know, we trust our teachers are doing this right. And if you have a question about it, there's a form that you can fill out to have it explored, to look, to look into more.
So the mechanism is there.
There's a form, yeah, and it sets off a whole de-diligency kind of um. Uh, review process.
Okay, thank you.
So the next policy is K E B and K E B R, which is the um. Public complaints about personnel. And as we said, these are, the recommendation is that we strike these as they have been updated in the K E policy. Um, and then the last policy that we reviewed is K E C, which is, um, I want to make sure I get the exact.
Curriculum and instruction.
Yeah, curriculum instruction. So um. This is a policy that allows a parent to request that their child not participate in curriculum and instructional materials. And it requires the school to provide an alternative um, curriculum or a, a, alternative material. So this is a policy that M A S C no longer recommends. Um, and they have similarly, they have moved some of this language. Into the K E policy. Um, so that, like any other complaint, I don't, I don't like this book. I, I, this teacher is not working, whatever the complaint is, it goes through the same process. So this is a streamlined way of. Collecting complaints um, and feedback from the community, which is always welcome. Um, but just, this is how we might. Go through the process.
And we refresh our memory, we. Straw pulled, voted, I don't remember which, and uh, we were, where we, we were unanimous in all of these decisions, right?
Yep. Yeah, so to summarize, um, we. Recommended um, for a first reading, that we amend K A, which is the goals. Policy, strike. K E B, K E B R and K E C and amend K E, which is the public complaint.
Okay, and so we'll see these again for the next meeting for a second read.
Yes. And we would expect to vote after the second reading, is that correct?
Yes.
Next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Could I just ask for the public, we didn't link in the M A S C policies in our agenda.
Well, they are, so they're in, they're on the agenda page of our website and the policy. Agenda, if that makes sense.
Right.
I don't think they're on.
Right, so just, so we only have the current policies in this.
That's right.
So if we could just work the final read, put them in.
Yeah.
On the both, yeah, yeah.
We're looking at a K A, for example, that.
That's the old.
No, I mean, we're, we're looking at an M A S C. New source updated as of this year and we want to make sure people have access to.
The easy.
Yeah, that's, that's easy.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, don't we usually do like old proposals?
Yeah, that.
That's what's on the.
That's what's on the policy of the agenda. Maybe for the second read, we'll do that so that when you vote, it's clear, we'll just pull it from the other one. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Do they come in multiple language? The policies?
Some, I know some districts do.
Yeah. I think the P D S don't convert on the translator on the webpage, so we'd have. Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah.
Uh, anything else on policy?
No, just that we are already um. Planning for our next meeting, which is right after the break, so January fifth.
Yeah, so you will see an agenda to that meeting.
This week.
This week.
Ooh.
Because it has to be posted before we go on break.
Right.
How about that? Because we would like um, Erin to be on vacation also.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm working with. Dr. Hunter in the chairs on the agenda and we'll send it out as soon as we have it.
That's a hybrid.
Hybrid meeting?
Yeah.
Nope.
No.
No, uh, okay. I hope I can physically be here, okay.
Okay. All right, so moving on to our action items. So our first action is a vote to consider the recommendation of the literature review committee. And you all should have received the memo from Dr. Hunter on Friday. They went to the school committee. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hunter and Kristen, because they were very much.
Yep.
Part of this process.
Right, so in terms of, you know, context here, so last week, Kristin's. Kristen informed me that the literature review committee had met. Um, just clarity, we had received a formal complaint. Earlier in the fall about the title in the high school library, All Boys Aren't Blue. Um, which is among the collection, we have one copy that can circulate. Um, so that had made its way through the process with the building administrators to Kristen, to now the committee. The group reviewed guidelines for library material selection, discussed why the book was in the library, reasons. It was being challenged and had a really, from what I understand, healthy discussion of the recommendation that they brought to me, which I'm bringing to you. Uh, the committee unanimously recommended that the book All Boys Aren't Blue remain in the library at the high school. Um, I am fully in support of that recommendation and bringing it to you and asking you to consider it. Just a little clarity on process, because you're in the midst of some policy changes. Um, we are actually deferring more to policy I J R, which is. Reconsideration of instructional resources. In that policy, it's very clear that the recommendation we come to you for final vote and decision and it's a school committee discussion. Not, not landing in our offices. So uh, we're here to. Bring that recommendation to you for consideration tonight, answer any questions you have. And um, hopefully wrap up what's been a pretty extensive process over the last couple of months.
So um, I would entertain a motion to uh, consider the recommendation of the literature new committee and Dr.
Salute.
Second.
Well, yep.
And any discussion?
So if I'm correct, were we to follow you earlier, K E C. A complainant would uh. Have to not accept a superintendent decision to reach us. I J R becomes immediately to us.
Yes.
Right.
Just to be clear, what's up?
And is there a three-year?
And there's a three-year.
Moratorium, correct.
And that particular. Piece.
Yeah, and that text, right.
This one is just a regional.
Just a regional vote, it's the high school, yes, good point, good point.
That's why I sent people ready for a vote. So on favor? Post. And next, we're going on to the Nordic ski team trip. And you should have a copy of all the information for that. This is our Nordic team at the high school returning to the ski trip and if you'd like to comment about Dr. Hunter.
I think, you know, we're just excited. All these trips that we thought were pretty typical are typical again. Um, so they're looking to go later in January to New Hampshire, spend um, just a two-night trip up there and. Um, be together and skiing, obviously.
Okay, does anyone want to read the motion language?
I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve this C C H F Nordic. Team trip as outlined to Jackson, New Hampshire from January twenty first, twenty twenty-three to January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. With the condition that a signed district liability waiver is received from all participants.
Second. Any discussion? Every time I read it, I think it says Jackson.
Oh, that's nice.
They don't have the same quality show.
Okay, uh, ready to vote? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, have fun with the ski trip. Um, and then next up, we have a vote to approve the C C H Japan twenty twenty-four trip. You also have all the necessary background information on that. And this is a band trip um. With the Performing Arts Department and they really would like to secure. The price, I would have to say.
Yeah, so and just talking with Chris, um, he's really excited to rebuild the connection to Japan. He's got this, I think, really exciting idea to um, do a little more big picture view of Japan first. And actually, in thinking about it, when the kids from Nani come here, they never just come to Concord, they tour the whole East Coast. So it's a little more of that mindset, at least for the first trip in twenty twenty-four, with then a plane, plan for the exchange trip and the actual Nani visit in twenty twenty-five. So he's outlined a pretty exciting trip to uh, Tokyo and other spots. I do think he's going to see if some of the Nai folks can meet him somewhere, but that isn't formal yet, so. Um, so, you know, things I'll note here that maybe we didn't get a chance to fully flesh out are all the other pieces that pertain to the other trips you approved. All the COVID pieces will pertain, all of the um, fiscal subsidies will pertain, Sharon Young Scholarship will be available. All of that will be in place. Um, Chris has secured a. Actually, pretty good price for given the trip that it is and was hopeful that we could uh, help to expedite this a little so he could secure it for sure. So this would be in twenty twenty-four April, so it's eighteen months out.
And do the kids know, sorry, do we wait for the motion for discussion? To the kid, do you know that if you, if you're in the band, are you going? Do you have to opt in? How does it work to?
So we haven't shared this with the kids at all because we need your.
Yeah.
Approval first. Um, so this trip will go open to the band kids primarily. That's always been the case when the band's gone. When we met with him, he did talk about opening Nai up broader than the band, so I think we're going to evolve to something. Bigger than just the music kids, which I'm really excited about.
And that would give them time.
Other trips, so say the Latin trip, if it didn't get filled.
Right.
With Latin students, open up only to Latin students, then it would move on to anyone else that was interested in going, if they. So, okay, about the dates, I'm just looking April seventeenth to April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four, though Wednesday to a Thursday.
I have.
Probably, I would have to say the airfare is probably cheaper.
Probably, yeah.
That's not what I saw.
But I don't think the roots aren't even, you can't even.
Wait, I, I have April twelfth to the nineteenth. On the.
That would make sense.
Of seventeenth to twenty-fifth.
On the itinerary.
The motion that's.
Well, I wonder.
It's the motion, we did check these dates with Chris because we spotted the discrepancy. What do you have, sixteen to twenty-three?
Seventeen to twenty-five.
So the seventeenth to the twenty-fifth, I'm like, I don't remember.
So yeah, Wednesday to a Thursday.
But that's, so the, the write-up of the trip at sea.
The itinerary, yeah, the itinerary said.
Yeah, we did, we talked to Chris about all this. Yeah, Erin's texting me, the motion dates are the ones that are correct.
Okay.
Let's, let's pull back from those specific for a moment and talk about our trip process. Is this one where we would return to our initial approval followed by a final approval. Which we would typically do in order to uh, have a teacher in a group. Green light a trip, so to speak, so they can start collecting deposits, getting commitments, making agreements, but still give them time to fine tune it. Uh, I think the last time we approved some trips, we decided to abandon for those. The initial and final. But I didn't think we set a precedent where we're going to do that.
Yeah, what's happening here is that this is a trip that we really want to come back and we need to start this planning process, so we. We knew we were bringing it to you tonight for a vote.
But that's not my point. Initial approval always did, just what we described. Initial approval always permitted a teacher to begin to get commitments, even get deposits. Even.
Yeah, I think if that's the case, we could consider it an initial approval.
If you prefer initial.
Well, I think it benefits the teachers too, because it gives them a little bit of running room to continue to fine tune. The whole process uh, was predicated on the notion that teacher doesn't want to get too far down the road. Until they get some approval from us. On the assumption that the final approval is going to be forthcoming unless something traumatic change, which in my memory never, has never happened.
Yeah.
So I think it really benefits the teachers and the trips to do it that way. It, it has been our time-honored way.
Yep. And then what's the, what's the balance for the scholarship fund currently?
There's eight thousand dollars left in the fund, um, having.
Expensive prep and.
Yep.
I know people are going to feel. Pressure.
Yep, so.
I guess the other thing I will say is C C Pops is a, a huge fundraising organization and they will be, I know that they will be.
Is that in here and I missed it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they'll be in the, or in the A O it is.
And there will be.
No, I mean publicly, it's not in here.
Well, in what goes to the kids is certainly will be.
Okay, so the expectation is. They can raise sort of some, some amount of money to go toward each person's to, to reduce it.
Yeah, and I'm sure that that will happen, but the other thing I will say about um, some of these trips, because I've done, you know. I guess I'll just, I'll state that, you know, the Sharon Young Scholarship and all these other trips, I've done a lot of research on, on some of these groups. And when you're working with a company like World Strides, you know, whoever it is, there is money built into the trips for scholarship. There, you know, there's a lot of opportunity and I think the sooner they get approval, the sooner they have an opportunity.
I'm completely, I'm ordered to give you the initial group. I feel for families that. You know, their child really wants to go on the trip and they actually can't afford it. So if we have a ways to defray the cost, I think that's encouraging.
I feel good about what happened with the Sharon Young Fund in this first set of fall trips and how those requests came in. Um, sometimes as the parent, sometimes as a student, um, I feel really good about how that evolved. So I think we're getting some. Further, we've always done some, of course, I think we're building some further tools.
But I guess my point is to defray for every student, right? That's a, that's a big number. For families and maybe they wouldn't come forward to ask for a scholarship, so you know, knocking off a thousand or something if, if we think we could, with season costs, I don't know.
A thousand dollars per trip per kid?
Yeah.
I, I don't think we as a school committee can get.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying, you know, it'd be kind of interesting to know what they thought that the.
Well, I think also we're looking at it eighteen months in advance and it gives the, the kids individually an opportunity to figure out ways to fundraise for themselves, but then also. The, to look at all these different resources that are available.
I think of two trips, the summer kind of opt-in trip, which isn't really in the academic year.
Yeah.
And this, which is clearly, you know.
Yeah.
Right in center. Um, a class, a group, a school group, um.
And I think this is part of the equity conversation that you and Lori remember very well. I think it's good that uh, we can give initial approval well in advance, so that anybody who can support this and help us achieve some of our inclusion goals. Uh, has, has more time to do it. I will also share with you that the Concord and Nai Committee. Um, is uh, very delighted that Chris has stepped forward.
Yes.
Um, and uh, the committee has not discussed this particular trip. But it's very nice and timed, because we have a delegation coming from Nai next year.
October.
And they'll, they'll know full well that this is the next uh, pearl on the necklace.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're all excited.
Good.
So I guess, um, what additional information would you like to move to final approval? Like what should be, what would we be looking for?
So we'd vote on initial approval, but then we'd want more.
I'm guessing that uh, they would be able to speak a little more to our equity and inclusion goals vis-à-vis this trip and uh, confirm the dates. Um, uh, and give us any changes in, in, in this. That's typically what happens.
Yeah, so I, the dates are what's in the motion, so. Yeah, I think the vendor is the key that Chris wants to secure, so hopefully the initial approval is allowing that. I don't see us being ready to bring you wide-scale um, fundraising pieces in the next meeting. I think Chris needs to, he was working on securing logistics, so. I, I, I think we can tell you when we're ready to come back for final approval, if that works.
There, there should be no worry about initial approval being a tentative approval.
Correct.
No.
That's not, that's not what it means. Never has meant that, it won't mean that now. It, it means that this is just a process by which everybody gets to be diligent about a, a trip of this. Huge magnitude. It's not a, not a small undertaking.
In the, in the new motion, do you need to define pre?
Just call it initial, that's what the policy actually says.
Okay, okay, yeah.
But I guess, you know, please let Chris know that, you know, this, the committee is committed.
Oh, I hear that.
Happen. I wouldn't want him to feel as though this is by any means, you know, something that he left out or.
No, no, no.
No teacher who's done one of these would be surprised. They've they've all gone through this process.
Right, well, Chris is new to CCHS too, and I think that this is a huge undertaking of someone that also has young children in homes. So I think that we just wanna make sure he knows that he's well supported.
Please pass along our.
I certainly will.
Okay, so um.
Yeah. I. We've moved.
They're incredibly efficient.
Yes, they are.
So I would like to take a shot at the new uh motion and just uh we will put initial approval in there.
The Concord Carlisle School Committee uh votes to uh uh initial uh provide initial approval. For the CCHS Performing Arts Japan trip from April seventeen twenty twenty four to April twenty five twenty twenty five. With the.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four, it'd be a lovely trip. Forgive me, April twenty five twenty twenty four, with the condition that assigned district liability waiver is received from all participants.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I just wanna say, I did go to the personal sponsor on Saturday.
You saw the bubbles.
But everything else was amazing too.
It's a lot of talent.
Yeah, really a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
It's cool.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
We wanna thank Chris for doing this, but we know he's not alone. He wouldn't be doing it if he was alone, so thanks to everybody who's.
Yes.
Generating support for this.
Oh, the trip?
The trip.
Yeah, oh, he is kind of alone right now. So we're gonna build him some uh team there.
As of tonight, he's not alone.
Exactly, there you go.
All right, so all in favor? And next we have our uh regional budget. So um thanks to Bob and Lori for their time spent on this. And let's see, the motion should be in front of you. Do you want to read the motion?
I've got a question, if uh you wanna do it now or after a motion's on the floor.
Uh let's do it after the motion's before.
I'm pulling it up, sorry, unless you have it, go ahead.
I don't.
Oh, okay.
No.
No, I got the town one.
Yes, I do, I have it.
I'm pulling it in, I'm almost there.
Yeah.
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the CCRSD fiscal twenty four budget. In the amount of thirty seven million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, ninety eight dollars. And the result into Concord assessment of twenty five million, three hundred and fifty seven thousand, eight hundred and forty six dollars. And the Carlisle assessment of seven million, eight hundred and ninety three thousand, nine hundred and thirty four, nine hundred and eighty four dollars. And to further approve the accompanying draft warrant article language for the town meeting article. And I believe that's specific to Concord or is it identical in both? For Concord.
Doesn't ask for us to get the warrant language.
Fine, good, thank you.
Do we have second?
Second.
Discussion.
Can you talk to us about buses?
Uh we have buses, the trip, I mean, I would.
Bus purchases or leases embedded in this budget.
So we have lease assumptions built into the operating budget. This will let us lease two additional buses each year. Which is what we have in our replacement cycle right now, so in the high school, we're talking about the high school budget, we can.
Correct.
At least two um high school budgets, uh two buses uh at the um at the region. You know, not, we're not talking about CPS, but two there as well, and that's what we need to kind of keep our fleet um from not aging too much. That is kind of the, what we would say is the minimum we'd need to order on a year over year basis. Longer term, it might be nice to be able to buy them instead of lease them. But financially, this works right now, and this is what we are proposing. And these are the diesel buses. Getting to the hurdle of uh financing the electric buses is something we'd have to come up with a different solution for, either a different solution or. Um additional capital. Um it's not something we have within the operating budget, nor the capital budget. The most promising um thing that's been talked about there is vehicle, the grid charging, which has huge financial benefit to consumable light. And um would be. Uh a way to potentially, the mechanics would need to be worked out, but it would potentially be a way to to fund electric buses. So that's kind of a separate discussion that's been floated, yeah, but um. We need to go down a path there to investigate that.
So I mean, we can speak to the 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 inventory of buses, the fleet right now, we have buses at the region. A year ago, we listed uh a bus as old as two thousand twelve, the rest of the regional fleet is a bit newer. Um and Concord, which, just anticipating that question down the road tonight, uh we've got a good number of buses that are. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and you know, John's got quite a bit of concern that if we don't sustain the two per year per district. Uh we're gonna really struggle to stay on the road, and having lived that experience my first year here where the fleet was very aged. And I was starting school late because it was so cold, the buses wouldn't start. Um we don't wanna risk returning to that. I understand and appreciate the goal of electrifying the fleet. But we need to have a separate conversation about a fiscal fiscal way to do that, um if we're gonna do it at a larger scale.
Have we considered any retrofitting toward clean diesel? Cleaner diesel, they call it clean diesel, it's cleaner diesel.
No, we haven't. I think that's just the honest answer at this point.
Folds came to us and talked about how a diesel emits twice its weight in greenhouse gas emissions um every year. You know, it's a, it's a year over year uh problem. CDC is pretty clear, soot, carbon monoxide, oxides, carbon monoxide. Uh the carcinogenic nature of diesel buses, uh the high incidence of reduced lung function and pneumonia. Uh you heard me say it before, I guess I'll just continue to say it. I think we've gotta be more aggressive. We have climate uh mitigation, climate change mitigation goals in this town. Uh I don't want to have a school district be the biggest polluter in this town. I'm concerned that we are. Uh if if not now, when? If we don't have the means, who does? Um is there something more important than children's health? Um I I'm not sure there is. So I I keep saying this, and yet uh I I keep coming back to John needs two buses, they've gotta be diesel.
Well, do you know, if we don't have an alternative solution.
Why don't we have an alternative solution? We baked in this problem where where uh we've we've come to this table on this date.
I think Brian maybe gave us.
And so we've sunk in too much time without properly addressing it, um so we can't address it. I mean, are we gonna say the same next year? How many years uh does this get repeated?
Where are we getting the money?
Well, we could have a separate capital article, and that's the time to decide.
But we just talked about, like, the capital article is a bad look for fields. Why would it be, you know, like?
This is a, that's, we're not comparing the same thing, we're talking about kids' health.
Okay, but we're talking about getting kids to school, and right now.
No.
We've got the budget in front of us, we're ready for a vote on the budget, and this is the first we're hearing. That we we've heard from you, but like this is before, we have heard from you about about the buses before. But it it would have been maybe helpful to have this information given to us ahead of time, that there was such great concern, so I guess.
I ask for the information at every budget discussion.
And we've, and the answer is right now is we need an alternative funding source. That's been the answer. That's what I've heard at these meetings, and I think that we've had a vote on the agenda, everyone's had the agenda, we've had the agenda overview. We need to vote budget tonight.
I'm not suggesting we don't vote the budget, I'm suggesting we take this issue seriously. And I've asked it uh to be an issue we take more seriously multiple times. I'll just continue to ask that we do so. I think with each uh each uh vote where we refuse to do it, we become more irresponsible than we were before, and I think. I I may not uh have uh other members of a like mind, but I'm I'm still confident that this is the right thing to say. If Concord can't do this for Concord and Carlisle and Boston kids, who can? And if we're not gonna do it now, when are we gonna do it? And I'll settle for that. When are we gonna do it? You say we can't do it now, when are we gonna do it?
Well, you know, it was interesting, like, did you, I don't know, if when you were at MAS, at the MASC conference, we spent. Or I spent a long time talking, we went, I went to an electric bus.
Went to Highland.
Uh well, we went to like a session on electric buses, um and then we had a follow up conversation with this gentleman at Highland, which. Um is a bus company that provides basically like leasing of options. Um and what was, what shook me. Um was specifically in the session, because I asked a lot of questions in that session. The guy, the the representative from the EPA kept saying to us, it's not your time, it's not your turn. Um you're not gonna, you know, it was eye opening. He said, you know, you guys are not gonna qualify for these grants.
Being conquered.
Conquered, yeah, we were very specific. We are from Concord, we keep, you know, I know we've applied for the grants, and he did say. Keep applying because it will demonstrate your commitment to this, and one day, when, you know, you've got. Some rural areas which are struggling far more than we are, um some urban areas which have just denser roots, um when we, when. When we go through this process, it will be your turn. Now, I will say, I don't think he had a date from when that would be, but it didn't also seem like it was going to be ten years from now. It felt, which is not helpful, like it was gonna be more like a two to five year kind of timeline, where he said, you know, we're. There will be more money, there will be more subsidy. Um and then secondarily, what was interesting in this conversation, he said the thing that's been tricky too for the Northeast is. These buses are great, California, where the temperature is very consistent, and there have, and 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 it is trickier here.
Usually they're better too.
Yeah, but but specifically, he said, um he talked about the ability to heat the buses. Um and that a lot of these buses come off the road intermittently in like the colder months that we have here, so you know, I do think. I I know it feels super urgent.
I'm not disputing.
Yeah, yeah, no, but but it was just interesting, so like, to your point, I think. There's an interest, there's a conversation to be had about the when, and maybe it would involve. You know, bringing some of these guys in.
And is it gonna be important enough for the school committee? That's, that's, that's my question to my colleagues. When is this gonna be important enough to this school committee? I'd like to know if we're gonna try to retrofit any of our buses. I'd like to know if if the the school committee should decide to support a budget. It includes more diesel, is it gonna be the cleanest diesel available in uh twenty twenty four? Uh I would like to know if, having sold nine buses, we can claw some of that money back, uh that would otherwise go to the town, because we get some of it, the town gets some of it. And use that to offset our cost. I'd like to know exactly what seventy one E can do for seventy one something, chapter seventy one can do for us for a regional bus. If it's electrical, I'd like to see us try hard.
Reduction act, if that's forty K per bus.
And that would apply to.
Electric buses.
Region or CPS?
Yes.
Anywhere, yeah.
Okay.
It's no qualification, everybody's eligible.
Offset or.
Of three hundred thousand dollars a buck.
Sure.
You know, I I'm just gonna comment and say.
Price on kids' health, I just don't wanna do it.
And yet the fiscal can't compete with the instructional needs of the kids and the basics of getting kids to school, so it needs to be a separate, please let me finish. We have applied for every grant that has come up. I do feel the need to reiterate what we have done, because I feel like this sounds like we haven't done anything and we don't care. We run three, we're about to run three electric buses, we've got the first bus in the state country. And got a lot of the kinks out for the major productions that are happening now. We've pushed the limit with the state. I don't feel ethically sound recommending to you going back to chapter seventy one and tip and pulling from the state bucket over and over for reimbursement. That is not the intent of that fund. That and that fund is intended for the rurals and the districts that are trying to keep. Basics happening, not to subsidize an electrification project. I think other districts that have done it on scale have other opportunities, because they're able to work at a large scale with a big electrical firm. CMLP has its incredible benefits, but it's making some of the solar a local discussion. And so there needs to be a collective discussion of if the town values this, if the communities value this, it's not just the schools. And so I'm gonna ask that we pull this out of the budget discussion annually. Let's call a collective meeting of the FINCOMs and the select boards and have it where there's a a major con combined effort. Because I don't think we can do it by ourselves.
And Dr. Hunter, I would be treating it uh like the important item it is.
Well, let's do it then. Let's do it then. Include the life board and make it a huge joint meeting.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty three, that's a doable next.
Kids on buses, so if we're not gonna start what you just described, I don't, I can't, can't imagine who will. I think we should start.
Can I make a suggestion to educate the rest of the board on what these electrical buses are gonna look like and? What the standards are? I know I was here for the gentleman that was speaking on the electrical buses, but again, he's never been invited back to the group. To further that discussion, he only had, I guess, minutes. It was something like ten minutes to present what he had. I I picked up on a lot of the stuff that he was introducing, but at the same time, um. Where are we getting the electricity from to charge these buses? What is it gonna be a cost to keep the repairs of these buses? I've seen a few articles where, you know, the the Chevy Voight, which is a small vehicle, it's, you know. Replacement of a battery is twenty five thousand dollars, and if you don't have a warranty, that causes another issue. So I hear you court on, you know, providing kids with with a safer, healthier environment. My kids are on the bus for over an hour, so I don't do diesel at all. Um driving a a commercial vehicle, I won't do diesel because of the smell and the health risk. But at the same time, the electrical piece, there's a lot of other components that we, as a community, as a as a state, still don't understand. Uh we still using fossil fuels to charge these buses, um so I just wanna be educated a little more on it, so we can come into a different space. And say, hey, you know what, um it's might, it might work in California, but it might not work here. Uh but it is working in Florida, and this is what they're doing, and this is um how we can go about mirroring some of the, some of the programs that they have. And again, back to what Cynthia said a minute ago, that, you know, you sell one bus, you get forty grand, but the bus is worth. Um the bus costs four hundred thousand plus dollars, so to me, that's like, you know, a ten percent return. When we can continue to put students in classrooms, so I just wanna be a little more informed, so we can have a better understanding what's out there, because it's changing. These electrical buses are changing by the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's true too.
Save in a lot of places because it's just a lot less.
I assure you, you have the most highly skilled ma- crew right now on staff to maintain electric buses because of our experience there.
If it was that easy, the TV run electric buses now, and it's not.
Yeah, it's not easy now, and we could share, we've had really big struggles with both of the two we've been running, and they're on the road, and then they're off, and they're on the road.
Gotta walk around with electric extension.
Okay, we've been on this for fifteen minutes, so I think we all have some. Work to do, and we will move on and convene a different group to work on this, but I I do think that. I would agree with Lori to pull this out of the budget discussion, because I do think it is gonna have to be separate, whether it's capital or well, whether it's. More grant money, more state money, federal money, I mean, prices of buses may come down in the next two years. We don't know what's gonna happen, so I think that. Continue to have a discussion, but outside the budget process could be very.
But we have to discuss everything in the budget to discuss the budget, and this is in the budget. Uh my question remains, um do we know from Mr. Arena if he's prepared to recommend what they refer to as today's cleanest diesel technology? I assume, I assume so.
Yeah, we can develop the spec, we can look into that.
I I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, so I think we have a motion off the table that's seconded, we've had a robust discussion, so um but we're gonna vote on paper. I am opposed. Budget passed, and with that, I'm gonna adjourn the regional school meeting, so thank you for our Carlisle members.
Lucky girls.
Lucky, lucky.
Came late, leave early. Everyone's jealous.
Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have a great break, you guys.
You have a meeting tomorrow night? You have a meeting tomorrow night?
Nice. I'm sorry, Sarah's grinning. Yeah, happy new year, you guys. Thank you both so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. All right.
You're not buying out the column, you're doing it. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. All right. So our first action item will go in order will be um to vote to approve the CPS budget. Can I entertain a motion?
I have it. Do you have it? Go ahead.
I move the Congress School Committee vote to approve the fiscal twenty four operating budget in the amount of forty five million, one hundred and ninety seven thousand, one hundred and seventy six dollars and to further approve the accompanying draft warrant language article uh for town meeting approval.
I'll second that.
All right, can we have discussion on the CPS budget? I know we've had some questions, but.
I think we'll be making a mistake if we come in uh higher than, higher than the town and uncomfortable with something exceeding five percent. We're pretty close. Do well to uh set that as a goal to continue working on this.
Have there been further conversations with um Peggy in the FINCOM? I know she had mentioned at our last meeting. No, they're just acknowledgement that they were paying attention and.
No, there haven't been. I'm sure there will.
Okay.
Yeah. I think sometimes voting the budget sort of is the impetus to get those conversations kind of started, but um
Okay.
We've got a lot of asks on the table for the town right now. Everybody's going to feel it. You know, right now, we're inspired by a vision of a new school and we're happy with the support we give our teachers and our students. Uh, but there's going to be a reckoning and I think they're going to also want to see that we really were as diligent as we could possibly be. And by that, I mean the school committee of the administration, we're sitting in this together.
Comments, questions? More like I just, um yeah, my, my, again. I articulated earlier, earlier, I'll, I will articulate it again. I don't feel like this is the the end of our discussions, this vote. I feel like this sort of kicks off our discussions and I think and we still have work in front of us. I don't think anyone at this table would disagree with that. But um, and I think, you know, I think we all acknowledge that. I think I don't think the, that, you know, so I mean, again, that's just sort of where I kind of see it. The start of work to be done.
And I do think we have significant needs of students that that's being reflected in the budget. So there's definitely work to be done, but I think we still have to recognize that those asks are for programming that we need at CPS that is doesn't exist right now. Or you, or you might need additional staff in the programs that are bursting at the seams, which is a good thing. I mean, I think some of our specialized programs they're drawing students from, you know, people are moving to Concord, having specialized programs. We have heard that before. Um, we're saving money by not going out of district and that that's just a reality to some of the money that's in this budget.
And a new school will help uh continue to support those programs because parents will see, you know, just like the the high schools, this beautiful facility and I give you point court, you know, more money out the door. Sometimes we'll bring more money back into the door and a lot of the things that parents are looking for now is to to have that sixth grade transition into seventh grade within one building. Uh, I know it was tough for my, for my daughter to get one building to the next because it's like, oh, now I got to learn a whole new building. So I think uh moving forward, um, the town will actually benefit uh from the budget that's been put in in front of us tonight. They're sure that the future generations um feel, you know, appreciated because, you know, where you sit down and learn sometimes um can can be intimidating, but at the same time, when you walk around and I speaking for kids in Boston, when you walk into a building and there's no AC system and it's the peak of summer, um, that's a big difference when you have a facility you can appreciate. And I I know the kids and and the families will, um, future families will. That's just my middle opinion, but.
And Court, going back to what you said, I, you know, like you look at this budget, line item by line item and as you said, I don't know exactly how you said it, but so much of it is I don't know what the right word is, like obligatory and the rest is there's just not a lot of meat left. So it'll be interesting to see. That's why I asked the question of where do we see kids and their needs going? Because you know, like you said, there's got to be some kind of, we, we're going to have to figure this out. Because it's um, it's daunting. What we're in taking.
We've got work to do. I think I, you know, we all, I think I have more questions, not for tonight. You know, continuing to look at, we've only been looking at this for like two weeks now, you know, that's not very long for a school committee.
We'll continue to have more discussions and.
Yeah, there's a point where a recommendation from the administration becomes a school committee budget. There's got to be some work in between or or there's, or you can't distinguish.
All right. Well, do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
Is there any more discussion?
Oh, I have one more thing. I'm really looking forward to the MASC um budget workshop that Tracy is definitely coming to do on January twenty fourth. I know it's, it's kind of like at a weird time, but I still think it will be helpful. So.
That's a regular meeting.
It's a regular.
Right.
Yep, yep.
We'll put it in.
I wanted to confirm that. I should have told Sarah and Sharon Billson.
All right, so all in favor? Opposed. All right. Um, all right, and then this capital article, what I I'm going to entertain a motion for it, thinking to maybe becomes the backup plan of the backup plan and say, you know, if it makes more sense at a later date to put another one that would supersede it for a special town meeting within a town meeting. Maybe that makes sense, but to Carrie's point. Um, I'm a big believer in having all options on the table. So if this is just one of them, I'd like to have it. We decide not to use it, great, but I don't want you know, just in terms of process and keeping options open, um, I still want to entertain this motion. However, we haven't really decided. I know Carrie had some opinions on the bleachers of of what the sum total of the motion would include. Any discussion?
I guess I'm looking at the, the draft that I think Bob put together.
Um, what does that include, Bob? I forget.
On, on the.
The it includes, yeah, the fields.
Athletic fields and landscaping.
Yeah, because they sort of go together. I get that. Um, any, uh, actually, would someone, and I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll read the motion.
Okay.
To then move into discussion, but uh the Concord School Committee, I moved that the Concord School Committee vote to approve draft warrant article language appropriating one million, eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars for the purposes of installing new natural gas, natural grass. Sorry, Court. Athletic fields and landscaping at eight hundred and thirty five Old Marlboro Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we move to discussion.
What's there now?
Well, this would be for the new building. So
For the new.
The new building.
Yeah.
So, yes, so what we, so Court and I sit as representatives on uh the building committee. So one of the things we did, because um our estimates on the building that are all these estimates are like done professionally, not by like us on this committee. Um, because of supply chain and everything else going on economically have sort of steadily risen. So the cap, the most we can spend on this building is a hundred and ten million dollars. That was a decision that was set forth by the select board.
Subject to
Subject to a town.
Subject right.
Seven million dollar vote that brings us to one ten.
Yeah. So the latest estimate, which came in in October, came in at like a hundred and eight point six. So people are thinking and 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 are, you know, hedging their bets. Okay, what happens if if the, if the estimates come in at like a hundred and eleven million, then it's all this tricky process stuff, but you, you would have to essentially um start over because and and sort of go back to scratch. And there was a hearing about this in Concord. Um, it it delays the project. It, it has cost, potential cost implications. So what the one of this warrant article essentially would be a potential solution so that if we get these estimates back January
Thirteen.
Thirteenth, um, this town meeting to approve um, this is on January nineteenth. If, let's say they came in, like I said, at a hundred and eleven million, you've got him, you've got a million bucks there that you'd need to complete this building. So Court and I sit on, sit on the building committee. What we did last Thursday was we looked at pieces of the building, right? The floor cost this, the roof cost this. Um, and what would be the first things that we would cut from the building if these bids come in over a hundred and ten million. So this, we made a list of five things, one of which were the fields. Because they're outside, you still get to build a building, right? They're kind of separate. You can't really take out the roof and still have a building, right? So
Fields last.
Yeah, so the fields, some landscaping, bleachers in the gym. Um, a, a, a decorative treatment on um the roof and potentially outdoor classrooms, but they didn't have an associated cost. Um, so what this would do would say if that happens, so that we can still keep the building on track, why, you know, could we put out a separate article that says if that happens, we have an article that would be at town meeting separate that says we, you know, could, well, would the town essentially authorize an additional, whatever it is, one point eight million for the construction of those two specific things. So that's really what it's for. So, so that you don't open a building with no fields.
In, in.
Or defer the cost.
Or defer the gas.
Laurie sits on the committee and votes as well. In short, legally, we need a means whereby if the bids came in over the available money, we wouldn't simply have to walk away from the project. We could give it a little haircut because we planned in advance, but what a little haircut looks like.
Yeah.
It's very problematic.
It's like the backup plan. And, and what I was saying in the Concord meeting, I don't think you heard yet, was like where the economy is trending, I'm hoping we don't have to use this, but you always want the backup plan or, you know, I, I'm advocating for it because I always want the backup plan, but.
Well, I'm with you on that because I know just the design piece, when you pay ten percent for them to design a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ten million dollar project, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money you'd be losing from them initial designs. So I I hear you on that and this um, the grass piece, that's why this actual was there before, because I know that we're going, we're trying to get away from turf. Because it's causing a lot of cancer within kids. So that's why I was just asking that.
Yeah, yeah. This would be a grass field.
It's not a natural gas.
Yeah.
Not a natural gas field. Um, so any more discussion?
I'll just uh re- reiterate what I already said. Um, I think some people's risk averse vote this is my, my perception of it is it's actually a risky move. I think it uh jeopardizes uh our standing with the select board and the FINCOM as well as some quarters in in town. Uh, but more importantly, it's just not necessary yet.
I just think it's premature, but I appreciate your view. Absolutely, I get it.
Oh, yeah.
I guess maybe, you know, you could have some further discussion with
Yeah.
Board chair and top chair.
Yeah, I've had preliminary discussions with both. Um, so yeah, and again, I mean, we hope that we don't have to use it. That's sort of where I net out. Any more discussion? And I, and I get all of that too. It's, it's, it's hard, right? This is like interesting, having really different perspectives on it. Um, all right. I guess, everyone done? All right, so all in favor of the motion? I, all opposed.
Present.
Present. Present.
So.
Sound like an abstention or this different? For the minutes, it's an abstention. Got it. Okay, I and A and I don't do abstentions. Yeah, they were both present. So I was saying, is that?
It's an abstention.
An abstention, okay.
Okay.
Just for the minutes. All right. So with that, I can adjourn.
I think so. Great. Thank you.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Yes.